This is the adjourned regular meeting of the San Marino City Council, Wednesday, November 18th, at 6:00 PM at the San Marino Center. The City of San Marino appreciates your attendance in person, hello, and online, and citizens' interest provide the council with valuable information and views about the community. So pursuant to Executive Order N2920, members of City Council may teleconference into this meeting without noticing each teleconference location. And we do have somebody, so this is particularly up tonight. I hope that Councilmember Wong is dialed in. Hello, Stephen. And as you know, we have a coronavirus advisory in place. So public comment will be also accepted during these times by email to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org before or during the meeting, and as well prior to the close of public comments on each item. And they'll be read by city clerk, and if they are lengthy, she may summarize them. Public comment will also be accepted electronically via Zoom teleconference module, and she will explain the details of that further. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if everybody can rise, and please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great liberty and justice of this world. I know, could you believe it? It's like, what was I was? Anyway, we don't need to go over that. Roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wong, via Zoom?
David, here.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Here.
Councilmember Tull?
Here.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Here.
And Mayor Shepard Gromit?
Here. The agenda has been posted 72 hours in advance of this meeting at bond locations at City Hall, at Crowell Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website, To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, is able to hear, all speakers clearly, please speak directly into a microphone. We have some further complications which the city manager will describe in a moment. Public comments are accepted also via email, and if you would like to, again, contact the city clerk. I would like to ask now, for your patience, as we navigate through this new process, and even tonight, some changes, and please note that comments will be limited to three minutes, and they will be timed by staff. So when I, if I have to interrupt you, I apologize in advance, but we have a lot of items, especially tonight on the calendar. I would like to ask city clerk, Acting City Clerk, excuse me, Merlo, to explain how public comment will work for each of the agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, for each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. We'll accept comments in three ways. We'll take in-person comments first for each item, and if you are here to speak in person, please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me, and they're down in the lobby. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org, and that email address is also found on the agenda. And these comments will then be read into the record and summarized if necessary. And we must receive these emails before the public comment period has ended for that particular item. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants, and when we ask for comments on Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. You can use the raise hand feature, which is found by clicking on Participants and then in the bottom right corner of the screen. We just ask that you do not use this feature until we ask for a public comment on that item. As a second option, you can send a typed message via the chat box saying you would like to speak on this agenda item. And again, comments will only be accepted until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now it's a public comment. This is a time when we get city input on matters that are not on the agenda for this evening. So members of the public may address the city council, and at this time, you may speak on matters that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda, but we will reserve the right-to-place limits on your comments, as well as ask staff to follow up on such items. So I don't see anybody here who is submitted, wants to speak at this time, but do we have any public comments that have been submitted via email? Or anybody participating virtually who would like to address the council?
I do not have any comments submitted via email, and I do not see anybody requesting you speak on Zoom at this time.
Thank you very much. So we will then go to the city manager's report next on our agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As my three-year-old likes to say to me, "I have good news and I have bad news." That's always a disturbing thing to hear from a three-year-old, but what I have to tell you tonight is there is some good news and some bad news. The bad news, I'm sure most of us know, is that we're seeing a surge in COVID-related cases, and the state and the county are looking at further tightening restrictions to try to ease the spread. One of those things that has happened, as the mayor alluded to, is as of November 16th, the state of California, this goes beyond the county, of course, the state of California has issued new guidance related to face coverings. So those who frequent our meetings will notice that we are all now wearing face coverings, even though we are physically distance at six feet apart. That is part of the new California guidance. It is available on the California Department of Public Health website, and we will be putting out an updated set of information via our weekly briefing tomorrow to the public. And essentially, California has now said that anyone in California must wear face coverings when they are outside of their home, unless some very specific exemptions apply. There are certain people who are exempt, none of which apply to anyone in this room, and there are very specific settings that exist as exemptions, none of which apply to us in this room either. So the mask, face covering protocols have definitely tightened up a bit, and so we hope that those watching from the comfort of Zoom, not wearing a face mask, will bear with us today. The regulations do require now that even within six feet or outside of six feet, as long as we're indoors, we do need to wear any face covering. So I appreciate the council and staff observing those protocols as well, and things are changing, and hopefully this will help us pull things back for the better. In terms of some practical suggestions, I've been told that if everybody speaks about six inches away from their microphone, we will be able to maintain audio and hopefully help people be able to hear, even though we're speaking through our masks. So we do have Dale sitting by controlling sound back there. He's going to be snuggled up with our sound control all night to be sure it goes up and down however it needs to, so people can hear. So for those of you that are viewing from home, if you are having a problem hearing, please find a way to send a message to our city clerk, and then we can try to make some corrections here, so that hopefully everybody can hear. That is the bad news. The good news is that we've had some employees, as always, doing some great things over the course of the last month. And I know this is something that's important to the council, and it's important to me, so I'm happy to share a few of those with you. We've actually, over the course of the last several weeks, received several kudos for our public work staff for several different things. We got some recognition for Mr. Danny Mendez in our Public Works Department from Mr. and Mrs. Stoll for some incredible help with their sidewalk work on Euclid Avenue. So there was some extra work that got done that wasn't to the original scope that we were able to do, and they were very grateful for the help and for Danny's coordination. We also received a thank you from Mr. Mitchell Milias on Oak Knoll for our public work staff in terms of how quickly staff went out and fixed a sprinkler that was related to his property. So he was grateful for that. And then, of course, our very own Mr. John Dustin also congratulated and thanked our parts and public work staff. He used the GoGov app, which I know the mayor is also a frequent user of. We appreciate.
Guilty as charged.
No, we can't fix things unless we know. So we really appreciate everybody taking the time to help us with that. But he reported a streetlight issue, and it was taken care of relatively quickly, and he received a survey afterwards, which is something that we do regularly. And he said that the work was exceeding his expectations, and he was very impressed by the response time and the effectiveness. So we're very pleased to hear that. And then we also had some thank yous from Mr. Jeffrey Lin, who reported another streetlight outage. Apparently, there's a little bit of theme going on here, and reported it as well in the GoGov app. And he appreciated the fast and prompt service that he received from Public Works again. And then last but not least, as it relates to public work staff, there was also a thank you from Ms. Lindsay Hand from Miss L. Fire Shoe Sore Mission, who was having what can only be described, and was described by her as a rather gross issue with a trash can that was old and not appealing. And so staff did go out and take care of that. She made a point to thank them. It seems like a trivial issue, but she said it really made a huge difference, and she was very appreciative. I trust that all of you took a look at our Hometown Heroes exhibit over the last week at Lacy Park, honoring of the veterans in lieu of what we would normally do for Memorial Day. The exhibit was fantastic. Thank you to our new Community Services Director, Brian Howard, and his whole staff for putting that together. Such a fantastic job. It was very moving to see it, and we certainly hope to see those getting bigger. And so we did get some kudos from many members of the community, and we also got some kudos from some of the people who were featured in the exhibit themselves. So Mr. Sam Rector, Mr. Anderson, and of course, former council member and mayor Allen Young. And then last but not least, I would just like to extend a personal thank you to all staff who've been on heightened awareness during the time of the election. We were concerned that we might see some unrest, and so we asked staff to pay some strong attention to what was going on and be committed to being here in San Marino. And the police department especially converted off of their normal schedule. They were working 12-hour shifts every day to be sure that we had coverage here and we were taken care of in case something happened. And thankfully, nothing did, but I appreciate the dedication from the police department, and we all appreciate the opportunity to serve you and the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, city manager. Director Maro, it's wonderful to hear about all the good work. So I appreciate you adding that and keeping us up to date. Next, we have further readings. Do I have a motion and a second to wait for the readings?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Because we are, Councilmember Wong, my understanding, is home, and because of that, we will need to have a roll call vote for each matter this evening. So.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, indeed. Councilmember Wong, should we take that as a yes?
Yes.
All right, very good. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tull?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Gromit?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar. And do any council members wish to call any items from the consent calendar? Councilmember Wong? Nope, shaking his head, I can see that. Councilmember Jacobowski?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Tull?
No.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No.
And I do not either. So do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? So moved. Councilmember Jacobowski moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh.
Good.
Good.
Second.
Vice Mayor Udi, seconds. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tull?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Gromit?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Next, we will open a public hearing on the appeal of the desire review case, DRC 19-45 HP, 1315 South San Gabriel Boulevard. May we have a presentation from Director Savantes on this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
What item?
We're on item 1414.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The project comes before the council as an appeal of a decision by the planning commission. At the August 26, 2020 planning commission hearing, the planning commission unanimously approved a request to construct a 2,812-square-foot single-story house with a two-car garage. The project also included a basement that is 400, sorry, 464 square feet in size. Subsequent to this approval, a timely appeal was submitted by the San Marino Heritage, which documents can be found on page four through five, if you have a printed copy, or on pages 14 through, 14-5 through 14-6 through the PDF that's on the website. The appellant claimed in the report that the project failed to go through the proper CEQA process. In addition, the applicant claimed that the project proposed to remove several trees located in the rear yard area. In addition to these concerns, the applicant suggested that we hold off on any approvals of this project until the city concludes its citywide survey conducted by Architectural Resources Group. With respect to CEQA, the project is not subject to CEQA review as the project is exempt under the guidelines provided by the state. This type of project falls under what CEQA rules find as infill development. According to the plans, the project includes the removal of four trees that are located in the rear yard area. According to the landscape plan, a crepe myrtle, an avocado tree, a magnolia tree, and a lemon tree are proposed to be removed. The lemon tree is being removed to accommodate the new proposed two-car garage. The arborist report indicates that the magnolia and the avocado tree are in poor health and are candidates for removal. The crepe myrtle was identified as in good condition with no inclination as to the request to remove. The removal of these trees will not be a final result of any action of the city council. In fact, one of the conditions of approval stated that the applicant must proceed through the administrative tree removal process before submitting to the building department. The urban forester is tasked, if this were to move forward, to review this request and may ultimately deny the request for the tree removal. As stated in the staff report, the citywide historic survey was completed in October of this year. Such lists did not include this property. Moreover, the historic assessment provided by the applicant found the property not to be eligible for historic status. The applicant did not express any concerns about the design of the project. There were no indications in the appeal application that the project failed to meet any of the required legal findings for a design review. And so with that said, staff is going to recommend the council motion to affirm the action of the planning commission. That action, of course, will follow along the resolution that's attached to the staff report, as well as the conditions of approval attached to that resolution. And I open for questions.
Thank you very much, Director Savantes. Are there any questions from council at this time? Councilmember Jacobowski? Thank you, Mayor. No questions. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I just have a question about the magnolia tree that's going to be removed in the backyard. Are they going to replace that with any tree?
As part of the administrative tree removal process, they'll have to supply the city, if this were to move forward, with the tree removal application, as well as the fees. That process will go before our urban forester to determine whether any of these four trees are candidates for removal. And as the council is aware, there are very specific findings for considering the removal of a tree, and those are related to hazardous conditions. And so the urban forester, our city urban forester, will not only look at the application, but look to the tree protection report or any arborist reports applied by a third-party vendor to make consideration as to this specific magnolia tree plus the other three, and concernly come back and deny the request if he sees fit.
Thanks, okay. Thank you. No more question.
Cancel. Excuse me. Councilmember Tull?
Yeah, I want to just focus on this tree issue for a second. When I look at the plans, the only one that has to be removed for construction purposes is the lemon tree.
Correct.
The other three trees are being removed for either because they're dead or for aesthetic reasons. So the only one that's really going to affect anything is that lemon trees. And it's merely an administrative process that they have to go through? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So really, if the magnolia is not dead, it's not going to destroy their plan. If the avocado doesn't have to be removed based upon that, it's not going to destroy the plan. So, okay, I got it. Thank you. All right.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No, no additional questions, as long as the arborist is the final gatekeeper. Thank you.
I also had some questions about the trees because of the discrepancy between the plans as well as the staff report, because the staff report mentions that there are two trees going to be removed, and that is also if I direct everybody's attention to 14-27. That's the arborist report, where the arborist that they did hire already speaks of removing the magnolia and the citrus, and states that they will need to be removed as part of this project as they are within the new building footprints. However, if you, is that, well, I guess back to what Councilmember Tull was bringing up, is the magnolia within the building footprint?
According to the plans, it doesn't show that it's in the footprint, nor the canopy is within the footprint as well.
Thank you. And also on that same page, if we just stick there, if you look farther up, it does say that all six trees are in poor-to-fair health, right? And then the table beneath that has three trees being removed. Do you see that?
Yeah, there is definitely some discrepancies between the site plan, the landscape plan, and the arborist report.
Right. Okay, and then on the site plan, we get back to that magnolia is admitted to be removed, and the lemon, but then you were talking about, is it the landscape plan that we have here? I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the page that has the also addition of the avocado and the crepe myrtle to be removed?
Right, L1C, L1.
Sorry? And is there any subsequent information? Sorry, I will speak into this. Is there any subsequent information about why, between this original site plan and the report that now the avocado, I understand it's listed as in fair health, but it wasn't listed as being removed? And the crepe myrtle was never mentioned as being removed? So I'm just trying to figure out, when did those two things become part of that? And was this all submitted at the same time? And there's just conflicts within these drawings? Or is this a subsequent submission?
No, I see conflict between the information supplied. I would direct those questions to the applicant to help better understand what the issues are.
Okay, but this all came as one, what we have reported came at the same time to, is it DRC?
Yes, the design review, yes.
They all got the same and at the same time?
Right.
Thank you. I did also have a question. When, when trees are to be removed from the yard, you spoke of the process that a resident, all residents, go through with doing application, et cetera, tree removal process that we specified in our code. Does that include for trees that are being removed for construction purposes, like the lemon and, or whatever the trees that are designated, the four, two, three, whatever the proper number is in this situation? Or is it part of the construction process?
Well, that's a good point to make here, and I want to bring that up. And the current tree preservation ordinance has provisions in the laws that allow the DRC and planning commission to allow for certain adjustments to be made to a project for the purposes of preserving a tree. For example, if the magnolia were in the way, or the magnolia were within the building footprint of their proposed project, the planning commission, by virtue of the tree preservation ordinance, can ask the applicant to redesign that area of the home for the purposes of saving the tree. Here, in this case, at least on the plan form, I don't see that the magnolia or the avocado tree are within the building footprint of their proposed home. And so there wasn't any need for the planning commission to make adjustments to the project because neither of the tree were in the building footprint.
Thank you. Yeah. And so the one tree that is definitely within one of the accessory buildings, namely the garage, there's only one tree that is actually within a building?
Right, and the technicality with that is that the two-car garage is not subject to a public hearing in that it's of a certain size where it requires an administrative review process.
And would that be part of this, I'm sorry, I'm not calling you there. Was that already decided, or you mean there will be a subsequent administrative review process because of the size of the garage?
Yes, there'll be a subsequent review of the garage if the project were to be approved.
Thank you. And my last question has to do with, on the top of 14-2, you summarize at the July meeting, the property owners and project architect, as well as residents, two residents that came and spoke in opposition. One, this had to do with this being a two-story project, but there were concerns about privacy issues in their backyard due to the two-story nature of the project. Were those also, or do you recall whether those also had to do with the tree removal issue? Because magnolia is the most significant tree, but definitely removing the avocado and the crepe myrtle, and the lemon, of course, which we've discussed, that would mean there would be no significant trees at all left in the backyard.
One of the applicants who voiced their concerns when this was a two-story project, shared with the city at that meeting the story polls, that the story polls and the silhouette of the story polls could be seen from his property.
I see.
And so he had used that information to demonstrate the massing and scale, plus also the privacy impacts that the second story would have on his property. I don't recall any dispatches related to the lack of trees or trees sort of helping or mitigating some of those impacts. It was, it was clear to me that the only solution to this project was to not have a second story to remedy the privacy impacts.
Right, which is what eventually came back, excuse me, was proved and now on appeal before us.
Correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions. I appreciate it.
Mayor, may I just, one more?
Sure. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm so hard-talking with this. On page 1431 of our packet is our two photographs. And on the right, one of them says, "Looking west." This is the magnolia tree, and talks about major surface roots. That might be a general issue that, and I don't know the answer to this, that residents in town would commonly run into with an older tree. What is the belief or the approach that our urban forester takes toward this kind of thing? On one hand, if I had this in the back of my property, it sure would be, even though the tree could be beautiful, disfiguring to the property, but on the other hand, there's such a benefit to the tree. Where do we weigh out on that kind of thing?
Well, first of all, this kind of condition on a tree, where you have the roots exposed like this in this fashion, normally is a sign of the lack of watering, where the root systems want to penetrate the earth in order to find some source of water. Of course, what happens in terms of mitigation measures with respect to a project, when you have a condition like this, is generally, to avoid any impact of the tree with respect to the root systems, you, I've seen arborists recommend hand troweling rather than using heavy equipment to work around these root systems. Also, the solution here would be to not really remove the tree. What we see here, in addition to, as I mentioned, the water impacts, are the roots generally follow the canopy of the tree. And so one could certainly foresee that if the root systems are sort of in this form, that the building footprints of the proposed rear of the house could certainly impact some of those roots.
And that was where I was going with that.
Yeah, and so what I would say, in my experience, if an arborist would certainly recommend, if this tree is going to be denied, that any work in terms of foundation or footing be mitigated by virtue of, as I mentioned, hand troweling, using hand tools rather than mechanical tools to excavate anywhere near that.
Okay, thank you. And that's also educational and instructive, because I see the area around that looks like it's without any covering grass or the like. So perhaps lots of lack of water. Thank you.
Does anyone else on council have further comments? For Director Savantes? All right. At this time, does the applicant wish to speak? Oh, sorry?
Is it the appellate or the applicant?
This says the applicant first.
Okay.
I just, I failed to note that we did just receive an email from the appellant.
Okay.
I believe she's also here, but I just wanted, oh, yes, I just wanted to make sure that that was identified.
Thank you. All right, so I think the procedure is the applicant speaks first, or that's how I have it in my records. So, and then the appellant speaks second. That's how this is written.
All right, 10 minutes, ma'am?
Sure. Do we have the applicant online by Zoom? Do we have the applicant online by Zoom or calling in? I don't see enough. I know the appellant's here. Oh, sorry. There you are. So it's 10 minutes total for both the representative here and if the homeowner or property owner is online, also wants to make comments.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Very good. I had actually been instructed it was going to be in the reverse, where the appellant was going to go first, but I'd be very happy to go first. Again, good evening, Mayor and honorable members of the city council. My name is David Gutierrez with Platinum Connections, and I represent the property owners, Frank and Celine Trong. I would like to begin by thanking city staff for their well-documented and articulated staff report. As stated in the report, we agree that staff has successfully provided factual evidence to address and dispel each of the appellant's claims. I would like to focus on one such claim related to a suggestion of historical significance that the mayor and members of the council have already touched on. The property owners, as a part of providing certain and necessary studies, engaged the services of a professional reputable firm who appeared, excuse me, who prepared historical resources assessment that concluded that the eclectic minimal traditional structure built in 1952 is not eligible for listing as a historic resource in any federal or state registers and as a local landmark. Demolition of the structure would not result in any substantial adverse change to a historic resource under the California Environmental Quality Act, better known as CEQA. I would also like to share that there were no questions or concerns related to historical significance by the planning commission, DRC, or any of the members of the public at the last public hearing. I would also note that there were no objections by any neighbors at the August 26 planning commission meeting. To the contrary, one of the neighbors who had objected to the original two-story design actually submitted a letter in support of the latter design approved on August 26. Finally, on a more personal note, Frank and Celine Trong have been residents of the city of San Marino for well over 13 years. When they purchased this property, they did so with a specific intention of building their greenhouse, where they would live and enjoy after retirement. Frank and Celine have two children who attended and graduated from San Marino High School. They are hopeful that this honorable council will take staff's recommendation to affirm the action of the planning commission. Thank you, and I remain available for any questions. And also, we have the architect of record, Mr. Freeman Haun, available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gutierrez. Next, Mr. Haun. And can you please hold on for just a second? Let him know how much time he has left.
Yes, you have seven minutes left.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilman and chair. And my name is Freeman Haun, our architect of this project. And a parent complained about my plan for illegible, such as on the plan. I have done the neighborhood notification. I reduced the plan to 11 and 17 because it's COVID-19. So I put in the package and the plan, completed plan, and explanation later, from myself, explained, described the project, and the objection approved later, and return envelope with stamp to city planner. So it's a package, and I drop to all the neighbor. And I don't see any neighbor complaining about anything. Only Mr. Johnson and Mr. Martinson, concerned about the two-story building. Then the first time we went through the planning commission, and I got a lot of comments from the commissioner. Then the second time, we just revised plan to the one-story and the basement. And I still made the plan, the new plan, drop to each neighbor, big old neighbor. And later on, we don't see any against from Mr. Johnson and Mr. Martinson. Also, Mr. Martinson wrote later, said he's supporting this project. And during the second meeting of the planning commission, nobody against our project. So this is I like to explain. And I will be here to answer any architectural question.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate your availability. Should we have questions, we can call. Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions at this time? For other gentleman? Seeing none here? Oh, you do? Okay.
This question is for Mr. Gutierrez, please. You said that the homeowners have been residents for 13 years. Has that entire time been in this home?
No, ma'am. They have never lived in this particular home. They purchased the property a little over two years ago with the intention of demolishing the current residence as we know it today and building a new home for themselves. Their residence has been in other locations within the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? And council member Wong, I don't know if you have any questions? I see you shaking your head. No.
No, I don't.
Thank you. All right, then we will close this portion and move to the appellant's. Appellant, singular, sorry, if you wish to make a statement at this time. You also will be allotted for the same amount of time, 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Gretchen and council. I'm Shirley Jangles, San Marino Heritage, and I wanted to thank you for your time. And I just want to say that I'd like to just read my letter because it came in kind of late, and I do appreciate the platform here so we can share it with everyone. So I'll just start with that. San Marino Heritage is our local resource for historic preservation and efforts to promote the architectural resources in San Marino. In such appeal demolition approvals, when we feel that the eyes of you, the city council, are imperative to fully review the impacts of new construction and the demolition of potential historic resources within the city. With regard to the application for new construction here on South San Gabriel, the city staff has set forth this evening this matter to be heard tonight, November 18, 2020. According to the Redfin listing from the, from the last time it was on the market, the home at 1315 South San Gabriel Boulevard has the potential to be restored to, quote, "the beautiful single-story mid-century traditional-style home from 1952, bright and airy, with many original characteristics nicely kept by the last owners for 25 years, set back from the street behind its mature shrubs and beautiful front lawn," unquote. It further states that this home, quote, "offers great living comforts and the potential for tasteful expansion," unquote. We must ask ourselves, how does it look today? And why is it proposed for demolition? The idea of this is a building project of the dream home is really speculation. It's worth less now, the last time I checked, than it was when it sold in November 2018. And it seems like it's because of neglect, as our code compliance department has recorded, and which we can all see by driving by. If these applicants are developers, they will need to cut more corners and/or do some over-the-counter adjustments to make this project pay off. From what we know about the original owner-builder, Mr. Gilbert Burely, he was an engineer and built his home for his family. These types of construction projects invariably result in superior results. Now, while San Marino Heritage reps did not attend the August 26 PC meeting, I'd like to put that in context, the city was in the midst of not only the COVID lockdown, which has restricted our ability to access records, and the lock, and no access to city hall except by appointment. We were also in the midst of a major heat wave, and through our efforts, the need for a cooling center for our Golden Seniors was revealed. We also were working on the San Marino Center issue. However, we did post info on the demo issue online for public access, which the city failed to do on their Facebook page. We reached almost 500 Facebook users. The first paragraph of the staff report does not provide clarity on the project for the public. It fails to mention that the original application was for two-story residents. That came later in the staff report. It also isn't clear as to whether or not the 464-square-foot basement area for the purpose of a game room, quote-unquote, is below the garage or below the main structure. It wasn't clear from the staff report. Furthermore, the idea that the basement is a game room is again speculation. Subterranean livable space is not appropriate for Southern California and is often employed to increase the livable space numbers for additional profit in future real estate sales. The applicants may be playing games, but it is no joke that the residents to the south of their parcel has a landmark tree in its front yard, whose canopy expands to within the footprint of the proposed new construction. We believe the city council has a duty to deny the project on this fact alone, as the applicants have had the option to restore or remodel the interior without disturbing the footprint of the current structure, thus protecting the public interests and the tree. Tree protection plans are inadequate, and we know the city has failed to protect our trees by allowing the impervious concrete parking lot within the canopy of native oak in the rear of the new commercial building at 2461 Mission Street. While staff may incorporate recommendations on tree protection fencing as a part of the conditions of approval, what we really need are measures in place to not only demand applicant compliance, but to ensure our staff's application and enforcement of our laws. City has failed to provide sufficient enforcement penalties and remedies for residential code compliance violations, not only on job-strike security breaches, but in general. In fact, we see unsecured trash cans at the property visible from the street, at this particular property, and prior violations at this property are documented. Therefore, in order to protect the interests of the cities, citizens, taxpayers, residents, and families, we urge you, should you approve this project, to oppose a security bond in the amount of the substantial amount, I put $1 million, but that seems a little, maybe that's too much, but anyway, a significant bond in order to protect the public interests and verify the financial wherewithal of applicants to complete the project before the expiration of the permit. We further request that you require motion detectors, padlocked dumpsters, and professional fencing for the safety of the neighborhood. Page 14.4 of your packet, page four of the staff report states, quote, "There will be no fiscal impact as a result of this project." I believe this is objectively false. These applications and approvals generate permit fees, but they also take up excessive time as our neighborhoods are bombarded by developer schemes to turn our beautiful historic residential neighborhoods into commercial districts. We have documented illegible plans being delivered to residents on both Monterey Road and Wilson Avenue. This is unacceptable, and it is the duty of the city to ensure that applicants follow the legal public process. But according to our current staff, there are no procedures currently in place to document that residents are receiving legible plans, information necessary to make educated decisions and to fully understand projects brought before them for approval. This is a failure of the current design neighborhood notification process. Quoting from the Client-Driven Historic Resources Report on page 27, "A determination was, quote, 'based on the findings presented,' unquote, thus not definitive, and are merely a recommendation to consider this property to be ineligible to be listed." This is a systemic flaw in all client-driven reports. The only remedy is for the city to provide its own report, and hopefully act based on their own objective reports. Sadly, a prior city council chose to ignore their own report, paid for by the taxpayers, when it came to 1475 Virginia Road. Page 15 of the historic report and the staff report appears to have a major flaw which is concerning. It states that the home, quote, "has to be at least 85 years old," unquote, to be considered historic in our local guidelines. I believe local architect and resident Lori Barlow explained to the council, staff, and commissioners why this is not legitimate criteria and has no standing. The July 29, 2020 minutes are incomplete in that they do not provide fundamental details that would be easy to include and helpful for the public record, especially during this pandemic, such as the nature of the comments by neighbors Mr. Johnson and Mr. Martinson. It wasn't clear whether they were for it or against it, and it would have been easy to put a little extra sentence in it. I'll sum it by saying we urge you to ensure applicants comply when you make a decision to allow such new construction, and to use your authority to restrict variances and impose important safety conditions on any residential construction project which will affect the community's quality of life. Most importantly, it is imperative that the city uphold the pledge made in chapter 25 of our city codes, as, quote, "safeguarding to safeguard life, property, health, and the public welfare." We respectfully request that the city overturn the planning commission's earlier decision based on this information and conduct its own independent analysis. Furthermore, in the best interest of the community, we ask you to table discussions on the demolition of this potential resource until after the state-imposed COVID restrictions are lifted for full engagement of the community owner, and to ensure the owners adhere to code compliance guidelines, and after a full secret review. Thank you for your service to the citizens and residents.
Thank you, Ms. Jangles. Do we have any questions by council members for Ms. Jangles at this time? Councilmember Jacobowski? No, thank you. No questions? Councilmember Wong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Taung?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions.
And I don't either. Thank you very much, Ms. Jangles. Next, we is the time for anybody else, public who's here in person or online, if they wish to make a comment for, against, or just on this matter. Do we have any public comments? I do not have any emails for this item, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom. Thank you so much for checking. I think we can speak tomorrow. So we don't have anybody else give a second to see if you need, if you, we have somebody on Zoom who wishes to make a comment, you could raise your hand at this time, or also send a message to City Plaque Myrtle. Seeing none? Then I'll bring this matter back to council for discussion. Mayor, do you want to officially close the public hearing? Shirley. Then I will close the public portion, seeing that we have no more comments. I'll bring it back to council. Thank you. Didn't have that here. I don't remember who I started with, so I apologize. Councilmember Jacobowski, did I start with this item with you?
Okay.
Did I do?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this one, in my opinion, requires just a little bit of unpacking because there are a number of issues that are being discussed here. So, and other council members may feel different, but I feel that the trees are part of an administrative process. And I'm not going to respond to that. I do not have the expertise. And I'm certain that if this were to move along, that those issues would be carefully reviewed and a decision made to address those. I also cannot comment on whether somebody who is making a proposal is an owner, occupant, or a developer. We are required by law to treat both the same. And there certainly is a minimum standard for quality of materials that need to be used. So I will move on to some of the issues brought up by the appellant and try to address those. So we were informed this evening that this is CEQA exempt because it's an infill development. And so that is the criteria that I am going to accept. And no design complaints were brought forward by the appellant. I will pause, though, and say that through this process, they certainly were responsive to complaints by the neighbors and requests from the Planning Commission. And they did scale it down from that second story, which indeed would have been unsightly in the neighborhood. I'll move on to the historic assessment report. And from what we are given, this property appears to meet only one of the seven criteria that would be needed to qualify this as a historic property. I have certainly driven by it a number of times since I have seen it on our agenda. It appears to me to certainly be nondescript in its appearance and part of a group of homes that have in that area probably started out similarly and either need repair, extensive repair, or have already gone through that process. I think one is right next door that has been remodeled. I do take note that there were initial concerns from the Planning Commission. And the fact that their final vote was 5 to 0 does hold weight for me in my decision-making. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Jacobowski. And I think I can affirm the action of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
I join Councilmember Wong on his assessment and as well as Councilmember Jacobowski. I want to thank the applicants and the architect for their cooperation with the neighbors and the Planning Commission in making the changes. When you have, when you can find an opponent and switch them into recommending the project for approval, you have obviously fulfilled your obligation as a good neighbor to bring them in. This is not... I join Councilmember Jacobowski. This is not a historic resource. I have no idea what 1475 Virginia or a tree on Mission Street has to do with what we're doing today. And I would... I find this as an improvement. And just the one comment on the third element in this Planning Commission appeal, the sufficient forms of penalties and remedies for job site securities will come next. That's what they will do when the project gets started. And we have to move to that point. So I would be in favor of affirming it and moving to the next step, which is administrative review of the tree plan and anything else that might occur.
Vice Mayor Udi?
I appreciate what both Councilmember Jacobowski and Mr. Tal said.
Thank you. I guess I will be the dissenter in this regard. This is a problematic... Plans are supposed to be final, accurate legal documents once we have approved this appeal or once the decision is made. And I think there are significant conflicts, even if we just refer to the plans here among the pages, between the L1, the landscape plan, the original plan, and then with the arborist's report and then the staff report, we have a floating number of trees. And I do believe strongly that this affects the neighborhood. This affects the neighbors' privacy rights, which were brought up. And the focus at that time was two-story, but I don't think that it was resolved. And the removal of possibly all trees in the backyard is a huge issue for me. As to the other matters brought up by the appellant, I believe that... And I... One more thought. I do appreciate that the appellant brought up also the tree that is located next to this property. And if you... We look at the 1466 and 1467, et cetera, in this packet, you can see there is a significant heritage tree that is the neighbors'. And nothing has been included about that. And it's well within the building, what will be the building site. And I am worried as well that that would negatively impact the neighbors'. And I don't believe that there is enough investigation that was done at that time. I know we can't, as we sit here, make any conditions on approval. So that's why my choice would be to remand this and ask that the plans be corrected to reflect the proper location and removals of trees because we have a floating citrus all over the place with the garage, as well as many more being removed. As a matter of fact, it looks like everything will be removed but one citrus tree, according to landscape plan at least. And there's been no provision, if you look at the landscape plan, to do any protection. And as a matter of fact, there's quite a great deal of work that's going to be done in the range of that neighboring tree. So I appreciate that that was brought before us. As to the CEQA, I do believe that it is exempt, so that's not an issue. However, the heritage... I'm sorry, the potential historic resource for me, I did read the report. I think there was a thorough analysis. And it's unfortunate, but I do not know that this receives status enough, a high enough status. And obviously, it doesn't qualify, according to any experts, whether it's the one there or not. So at this time, I don't believe, but I still think it should be remanded. Feel strongly that we can't go forward and should not, particularly in light of... The last point I would make is the driveway... Excuse me, the garage, which is going to be pushed back and now is going to get a separate review. I believe those garage issues... I think we heard it from Design Review Committee today that the garage should be considered part of the same project because it obviously has pretty significant impact. And this is a perfect example of them moving it and causing some issues. And the two structures should work hand in hand. So for those reasons, I would appreciate the opportunity for Planning Commission to look at it again. But that's my view.
Mayor Tal?
And I ask staff a question.
Of course.
She raises... The mayor raises an interesting point. And these are legal documents. And I've heard that reference before and have done so myself. Does the tree plan or suggestion of tree tearing up... Is that included within our decision today? Or if we affirm the Planning Commission? Or is that as a matter of regulation or ordinance dealt with separately?
Yeah, it's a... It's a matter of ordinance that we deal with and administrate as a next step.
So we are not... Assuming that we vote to affirm or send it back for further clarification, but if we do affirm, we are not affirming that they can go out and take out that magnolia?
Right, like I mentioned, as part of the administrative process, the arborists could still, in fact, deny these requests to remove these trees.
So the... What is the legal... What we're doing that become legal documents is the design and the placement of the house at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the arborist is going to weigh in on us whether it goes back to Planning Commission or goes forward?
That's correct.
Question?
Yes.
Tell me, if the arborist approves, that they could just remove that tree and proceed with their construction? Is that correct?
Well, they would be... They would have to go through the process to notify the neighbors. As part of the tree application process, if it is approved, they will have to post a notice on the front yard of the property, being that the trees are in the backyard, to allow the neighbors an opportunity to potentially appeal the request to remove the trees. Part of that process includes a 100-foot radius surrounding this property, again, to notify the neighbors of impending tree removal, again, allowing the applicants... Sorry, allowing the residents to also appeal the tree removal application. So that is part of the process. It's not just that they get the approval and can automatically remove them. There's a process involved that takes us about two weeks out from the application.
So will the appellant have a chance to appeal again if she finds out the tree is approved by the arborist to remove?
On the tree matters, yes.
Does she have to pay for the appeal fee again?
There's an application fee. It's a separate process that has a separate fee as associated with the appeal of a tree removal.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
And I have a question, too. There are... So I understand what Planning Commission did. They did not, as far as you suggested, hand-troweling around whatever is left, for example, those exposed roots, or now being made aware by the appellant of the diador that's next door that encroaches on the property, probably roots, et cetera. But did Planning Commission make any... I don't know, but findings or make any conditions when they approved this project regarding any tree work? Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yes, I do. I'm looking at it.
I know that to be removed, we don't know. And that has an administrative after-the-fact process. But it concerns me if also there was no... About the construction event itself?
There's a condition under C4, under the conditions of approval, that require that the applicant... The arborist evaluate the conditions of the trees during construction to ensure that the trees are protected during that period.
That's just a standard form?
Right.
And it would be this arborist that said all sorts of different things?
It can be this arborist or it can be another arborist.
Okay. But there was no other conditions? Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for Director Sivantis? All right. So do we have a motion?
I move to affirm the action of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepardon? Next, we have introduction and first reading of ordinance number O-20-1378 regarding regulations on small restaurants. Can we have a presentation director, Sivantis?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The staff seeks approval for a code amendment that looks to provide more flexibility for what we consider small business or small restaurants in the city. The proposed code seeks to relax parking provisions for what we've newly defined as a small restaurant. A small restaurant is defined pursuant to the draft code as a restaurant, coffee shop, or other dining establishment that provides that the floor area does not exceed 1,500 square feet. In addition, small restaurants that provide no more than 25% seating area within that gross floor area could be assigned parking requirement that is equal to that of retail or office uses, which is a ratio of one parking space for every 250 square feet of floor area. A small restaurant that satisfies these requirements will be allowed by right without the need of a public hearing. As the city experiences more vacancies through this crisis of COVID, it's become almost impossible to fill some of these vacancies that we're dealing with. And more so is because to... In order to fill these vacancies, new businesses must satisfy the parking requirements, at least the current parking requirements. Such standards certainly definitely rule out the possibility of a restaurant use coming into our city because, again, of these parking restrictions. The intent of this ordinance is to spark interest from potential new small businesses and to provide the economic development team with leverage when it comes to negotiating or attracting new business and to discourage teardowns of commercial buildings due to not being able to meet the parking requirements, which is certainly a condition that we've seen in the past, where by virtue of not being able to satisfy the parking requirements because of the size of the existing building and also the size of the lot, where it makes it impossible to meet the parking requirements, at least not without a variance. This approach can certainly lead to more of the adaptive reuse of our existing commercial buildings, which is certainly a plus in my mind. Staff also seeks direction as to whether the parking standards can be applied to the gross floor area of the commercial unit or just applying the commercial parking as proposed to just the seating area. So to be more clear, staff is looking for direction as to whether the council sees that the proposed parking requirement of 1 to 250 applies to the overall size of the unit or just applying it to that 25% of the seating area. And as a result of whichever direction the council sees fit, of course, applying the parking requirement to only the 25% area is going to result in less parking being required, whereas counting the total square footage of the unit is going to require more parking. But nonetheless, it's certainly a less restrictive process. It's important to note that the Planning Commission did adopt or approve this ordinance and recommend the council also propose or recommended the council also adopt the proposed code amendments. And so with that said... Actually, before I conclude, I do want to note that the ordinance, the way it's drafted currently, applies the parking requirement to the total square footage of the commercial unit. And so with that said, staff recommends the City Council discuss this item and then waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title, with or without amendments, ordinance number 20-1378. Any open for questions?
Questions for council? Councilmember Tal?
Yes, could you give me an idea? Do we have any existing restaurants, cafes? Give me an idea of what's here right now that something like this would apply to? Would it apply to the San Marino Grill or Starbucks? Or the restaurant... There's... What would it apply to San Marino Seafood? Are they within the size that you're talking about?
No, the one... To best give an example, I would say that the new unit that's next to Fresh Formade or future Fresh Formade there's a vacant unit between Fresh Formade and the gym on Bedford and Huntington Drive. That unit's about 1,200 square feet. So that unit would be allowed this opportunity with this new code amendment. Moreover, the new commercial building on Mission has two units next door to one another that's 1,200 square feet as well. That building would be able to apply for this benefit as well. There is a unit that was formerly known as Jarboe on Mission that also meets this criteria and can easily fit a small restaurant as well. But I don't, to answer specifically the question, councilmember, I don't know the size of San Marino Grill nor the Fresh Formade. So I don't know offhand whether they would be able to benefit from this code amendment.
Okay, if you would just take me through, you say one parking space is provided for each 250 square feet of gross floor area of the business if the indoor seating area does not exceed 25% of the total gross floor area of the business. And then if you say if it exceeds, the standard parking requirements for restaurants set forth are satisfied? Standard parking are satisfied? I don't know what you mean by that.
Yeah, so what I mean by that is if you have a commercial unit in a C1 zone that does not exceed 1,500 square feet, they could potentially start negotiating to lease that space. They would then approach the city with a plan that showed that no more than 25% of the square footage would be dedicated to seating. And so that would meet then the second and final criteria. If that were to occur, then we have the ability to approve that small restaurant inside that commercial property. The last, of course, checks and balance would be that that the parking requirement of 1 to 250 would also be satisfied. So we're looking at a couple of different components. The 1,500 square foot max, 25% of seating area, plus also satisfying a parking requirement of 1 to 250.
Okay, so the 1,500 comes in as the first step to qualify?
Right.
Then it goes down to 1 and 2 depending upon what they do within the 1,500?
Right.
Okay.
And if they, sorry, quickly.
No, go ahead and finish. I'm sorry.
No, and so if the applicant chooses to not dedicate 25% in seating area, let's say they want to go beyond that, then our current parking requirements would apply to that restaurant use, which is a parking ratio of 1 to 45 square feet. These are our current standards that I address being the more restrictive standards. If the applicant just merely doesn't feel 25% is enough of a seating area, they can look to increase the size of that, but they're going to have to meet more parking, more restrict parking requirements.
And what do we do with outside seating?
Outside seating is allowed via a separate administrative process. Typically, we don't count outdoor seating towards the parking requirements.
And, okay, so if you find a place with 1,500, less than 1,500 square feet and have 25, 24% of the interior used for seating, you can put as many tables as might be allowed under the administration and the parking still going to be 1 to 2?
The only limitation to putting seating outside is you have to satisfy the ADA requirements. And that typically, when it comes to ADA requirements, meaning path of travel accessible off the sidewalk, that's going to limit how many tables and chairs you can put outside. Those are.
Because it's got to be within the footprint of your building.
Right, yeah, it has to be within the facade of your unit, outside your unit.
So it's not, it's, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, are you aware of any prospective applicant that would fall under this criteria?
I had, I had two, and unfortunately, I'm saying I had, past tense. I had one drop out today. They just couldn't wait to have this formally adopted. It was a cafe. In fact, it was a coffee roaster that I had intended to fill one of the units on Mission. And so according to the broker, there are other coffee shops who are interested in that location. So right now, I have two potential new businesses that are waiting in the wings.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing this, I certainly understand the intent, both with the high vacancy rates right now and the effect of COVID on any business that could even be new or existing. Am I correct in understanding that in the future, we get past COVID, we fill the multitude of vacancies in town, and we're just moving along at a great pace? Could we, or the future city council, come back and then vote to make this more restrictive again? Okay.
Just to be more specific, the council has two options, in fact. The proposed ordinance could be amended to place a cap on this ordinance, meaning that it could expire after three- or five-year period, whichever the council sees fit. Option number two would be, of course, to see how it plays out and then reintroduce it later on to see how it's working out with the potential of, you know, taking it back to more restrictive standards.
Thank you.
And these parking restrictions are intended for customers and not employees?
For customers, yes.
And most shops, all shops have parking in the back for employees?
Correct. That's traditionally what has happened.
Okay. And again, you think this ordinance will give you the flexibility you need today to try to fill more spaces?
Yeah, one of the reasons why we came up with 1,500 square feet is that seems to be the size of unit that attracts these small cafes. It wasn't just a number out of the sky. It was a number that we felt comfortable with based on what we've been hearing out of the market. And so we feel that we hit the right numbers to, like I said, get better leverage and try to attract some of these businesses.
I appreciate your listening to the customers and some creativity, so thank you.
Councilmember Wong, did you have any questions?
No, no more. Thank you.
All right, and I was, I'm sad that, I know we discussed this and the fact that those two were waiting. I'm hoping you can get a coffee shop up there and people will be interested. So I encourage you and think it would be good to stimulate business and support our businesses when they come to San Marino. It would be unattractive. My concern with limiting the timeframe specifically when we adopt this, like giving it a short period of time, is I think that might then be considered a negative, right? If you're entering into a commercial lease, you don't want to know, okay, and all the investment that you put in, you know, might be taken away or wasted. So I would discourage the thought that we would do that and hope that this is for select situations and select type of small restaurants. So again, this will be used particularly for a little niche in order to bring more of those into our town and give them the support they need.
And if I may clarify on the expiration concept of the ordinance, if businesses were to come in by virtue of the ordinance being effective and they had this expiration on the ordinance, they would not be kicked out. They would be considered grandfathered in past that deadline.
Oh, thank you for the clarification. All right. Do we have, I'd like to now open this to public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item here? Or have any comments been submitted, public comments submitted via email? Or of those participating virtually?
I have not received any email comments for this item. And... I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
All right. And we did not receive anything prior to the meeting on this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close the public comment period and bring this back to council for discussion. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
You started with me.
Councilmember Tal?
I have nothing further. I would like to see this move forward.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, Mayor, if you can allow me to indulge for just a moment. I'd really like to draw attention to Director Savantes in both bringing this to us and bringing the concept of the economic development to the city and to the community. I congratulate you on bringing this concept forward significantly before COVID so that when this hit us, it's obviously hit our business community in a much deeper way than it's hit our residential. I have seen you out there putting up sandwich board signs out front of the businesses, advertising that they're open. I've seen you put the six-foot spacings in front of the different businesses. I have seen you walking Huntington Drive and Mission. And for that, I really appreciate your efforts. We need to acknowledge that we are facing a very dire situation going forward with vacancies. And I hope this is just the beginning of your creativity in assisting us. I think this is an excellent first step, and I value what you have done. And on that note, I certainly feel we only need to do the ratio, the seating only, not overall, and ignore the rest of it. I think we need, at this point, to be as liberal as we can be. And if we move forward and we see some roadblocks, we can address those. But right now, we've got to start filling the city back up. So thank you for your work.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I also want to thank Director Savantes for his, you know, effort in trying to make our city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Udi?
I appreciate what you and your staff are doing, so thank you.
And thank you very much again. I will ask for a motion at this time.
Yes, I would move to a full reading and introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number O-20-1378, an ordinance of the City of San Marino amending the regulations on small restaurants.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepardon?
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have introduction and first reading of ordinance number O-20-1369 regarding the amendment of the tree preservation ordinance. And again, can we have a presentation by Director Savantes?
Yes, thank you, council members and members of the audience, and mayor, of course. At the October 30th, 2020 city council hearing, the council directed staff to return with a revised code that addressed changes provided by the council. A revised code was provided to the council via email, I believe, a couple of days ago, that included a missing component, which is with respect to the penalties upon the tree appraisal system. So that is, I believe, before you now is also available to the public. So that is the ordinance that we'll be looking at tonight. Staff has included all the changes as requested by the city council, including elements which include tree trimming, operations, new definitions, the separation between heritage trees and oak trees, and notice provisions, amongst other changes, of course, to the ordinance. Staff has also drafted a tree guide or summary to help better explain the provisions of the code to the members of the public. Moving forward, staff will be providing ISA standards. These are tree standards by a well-known association as to the care and treatment of trees. And we will be including these documents along with the tree application that we hand out at the public counter. In addition to that, we will be providing the applicant with documents related to information related to tree appraisals and tree appraisal process. Most importantly for me on this code revision is with respect to the restructuring of this ordinance. As council recalls, one of the priority initiatives was to restructure the code. This is an example sort of of our first attempt to restructure the code. And what I mean by that is currently this ordinance is, for lack of a better word, buried under Article 6 of Chapter 23. What I have done is pulled it out of that article and made it an independent article that is front and center in the municipal code, rather than having to go through a number of clicks to get to the ordinance. Now it's just right there for our residents to find. And I'll be bringing more of these types of restructuring to the council to sort of help make the ordinance more readable to our public. And so with that said, staff is going to recommend the city council, of course, discuss the matter before you and waive full reading and introduce for first reading, ordinance number 20-1369. And open for questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wong, would you start off with questions? Do you have any?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, I need to get myself there organized a bit. First off, thank you for all of the new definitions. Those are really, really helpful. And again, I'm always going to read this as a homeowner who has absolutely no city involvement. So this is really great. I want to ask you about the certified arborist. Do, I know you mentioned ISA just now. Do arborists also need to be state licensed? Or can you be an arborist without being licensed? How's that work?
You certainly need to be licensed. There's a special certificate that you obtain by virtue of educational background as well as, of course, the need for testing to obtain that certification. I'm not 100% sure whether there's a state license that's also part of this process. But I can tell you by my experience, there's certainly a lot of educational components. There's a lot of testing involved in order to receive this certification.
Okay. For informational purposes, that might be helpful to learn going forward. But that certainly starts us out for that. Let's see, I had a few other questions, but I just was looking for some clarification. I think it comes up again on page 16-9 for 23.19.04 tree trimming permit procedure. And it refers to a certified arborist or a state licensed tree trimmer. I'd like to see us get more common language that goes throughout this so that we're not jumping back and forth between items. So again, that homeowner will know exactly who they could use. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I neglected to mention how we can certainly help with that process by virtue of providing a list of tree trimmers who are not only state licensed but also obtain a city license, which is also very important for us. And so a small component to the tree trimming process is we're going to now publish a list of tree trimmers that are certainly meeting the qualification.
Great, great. And again, my concern remains under definitions so that we, if we're using terms interchangeably or saying an either-or, just so, again, that homeowner can know what they are talking about. I want to ask you one other question. We know that the utility companies do work in town, and we have this provision about giving notice and also about their work. Is, in reality, is there any remedy against public utility companies that either don't give notice or really act something up?
Yeah, that's been a tough one. We, a couple of years ago, we were experiencing utility companies just sort of taking their own hands of these trees and, for lack of a better word, topping any tree that's near Ohio Bolters Line. We sat down with their representatives, and unfortunately, a lot of the messaging that we got from them is this is what we have to do. And there's not much that the city can do to sort of remedy this. Now, that being said, if there's ever a situation where a tree has to be removed because the utility company suggests it, it must go through the same process, which is notification of the neighbors, posting of the signage, the allowance of 15 days to post this sign, also allowing the applicant, or sorry, the neighbor to appeal those decisions. That doesn't change.
And they've been cooperative so far, right?
In the one case that I've dealt with recently, they have been, yes.
Mayor, in clarification, should I keep asking questions? Or should I just hold off? Because I'm, this is specifically for you, Director. I don't know what you want to do.
It's your question, Father.
Keep talking. Okay. And then I wanted to comment, under tree removal permit procedure, it would be page 16-11, under item 2A. Again, I'm a homeowner who's never dealt with the city before. So we're talking about application contents, and we're talking about a licensed state contractor possessing, and then it names three types of classified licensees. Since that, those numbers don't mean anything, would there be any benefit for the homeowner to be able to sound a little bit more intelligent with the person that they're dealing with to sort of clarify what the difference is in those?
Yeah, I think what this calls for is the possibility of taking that summary sheet that we've come out with and clarifying what these numbers mean. So I think, you know, in reading- So I think, in redrafting this ordinance, I remember your comments about bullet points on this ordinance. Unfortunately, because of the way that ordinances must be drafted to be legally justified, we couldn't sort of add bullet points to this, but our idea was to generate that summary to better simplify what we're trying to approach with this ordinance. And so we can take that summary, which, by the way, is a draft document, that is a live document, and we can always tweak it to make it better for our public.
And that's wonderful, the piece that follows all of this in lay language that does have bullet points. It could be tweaked a little bit, and I think you have put in an enormous amount of work from our last meeting to this meeting, to even though we've got the pretty, you know, dry language of an ordinance, it still is significantly more easy to follow, and I'm appreciative that you're willing to take it as far as we need to go, so that, again, the average homeowner can look at it. I had another question on page 16-15, or it would be under 23.19.07, other requirements and incentives for the protection of trees. I'm not following item 3, projects requiring other approvals. It might be just me, so if it is, bear with me. It feels a little bit wordy, and can you tell me what it means in simple light?
Yeah, so this goes back to the prior project at 1315 San Gabriel, where we were mentioning how the planning commission and the design review and council have the ability of directing the applicant towards a different project for the purposes of preserving a tree. In summary, that's what this section does. It gives the planning commission and the DRC and the council the ability of, for example, if a tree is impacted by virtue of an addition, sort of taking its place, the planning commission, what this does, it gives the planning commission the ability of saying, reduce the size of the addition for the purpose of preserving that tree. That's what this does.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that thing?
Please.
While we're on this, because I also have questions. If you read further in this, it limits the reviewing authority to approve the modification of up to two standards. And I'm wondering why two standards? Because if we're in a situation like the prior appeal that we've heard tonight, if you wanted to impose upon a ham trial line to protect the neander and the magnolia, or you wanted to move the garage of the citrus and guava and crape myrtle, that's already two right there. You haven't, you know, I don't know what else could possibly come up, but I'm sure there's a way, because all the trees are going to be gone. So why is the justification, what is the reason, or can we just say they may, why limit them to two things that they could do regarding a plant?
Yeah, there's no justification for the two. You can do all four, we can do one. It's up to the pleasure of the council as to how many should apply.
Okay, so, but, and then I go down and I look at this list that B says, of that subsection, specifically says, "Trees to be preserved is or in good health and condition," taking into account blah, 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 by the certified arborist. And so we have the exact situation here, where the certified arborist on the San Gabriel home said that every tree in the yard was in poor to fair condition. So basically, there was nothing, there would be nothing that planning commission or DRC could impose. So have we thought about changing the language there or dropping that? Because that is a subjective criteria. I see what you're saying, but if the homeowner says, or not the homeowner, the certified arborist paid by the homeowner says they're in poor condition, then it ties planning commission and DRC's hands in doing anything about the trees on the property.
Actually, let me clarify. The two standards doesn't refer to the A, B, C.
No, no, I know, it's a separate, I understand that. You combine them, but I understand how this is supposed to work. I think I do. But I don't agree with the terms in the subparts, that they have to make these specific findings. So I have an issue with the limitation of two, and then I'm concerned that we're saying good health, and I'm not sure any tree that's over the age of 15, 20 years old would be good health, just like anybody can make a judgment about age or deterioration, et cetera. I'm not speaking personally about this, but a little touchy here. So I'm concerned about, you know, making it the highest level of a certified arborist report. You know what I mean? As part of the qualifications before, they can even act, and then they can only do two things. So I would like to, if we're going to include this, I would like the council to suggest increasing the number there, and I don't know what we can do about removing those provisions or changing the language there. So I was looking to you for some suggestions that might allow the planning commission and DRC to make the steps necessary on some of the projects that they're seeing. Okay, so.
The only suggestion I would say is the last sentence prior to the findings, the reviewing authority may approve the modifications after first finding that.
Right, okay. Just take up to two there, so that's easy. And then about the, should we just drop section B and not limit their actions to be in good health altogether?
Certainly, if that's the council's pleasure, sure.
I mean, I assume they're going to have an arborist report that they're going to act on anyway.
Right.
And the advocacy by the person wanting to remove the trees in a construction project is always going to be, they will say something that, well, they'll state their case why they have to remove the tree. So I would like B to be removed in this section. Unless, but anyway, we can further discuss this if other council members have thoughts. But, okay, I appreciate you taking the time to call, to clarify how that section is. Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you. Okay, moving forward on, let's see, violation enforcement and restoration, that's 23.19.08. And under violations of this article, item C, any gardener or tree trimming contractor does not have a city license, could be subject to penalties set forth and blah, blah, blah. Well, aren't the homeowner or the agent the ones who have hired that person? They certainly don't come in on their own and say, I'm going to work here. So what I think we would want to do is force the penalty upon the owner or their agent, right? Because if I'm not licensed in town and you want to take action on me, I just don't deal with you anymore. Right?
I guess that the question in my mind is, I guess accountability, how is an owner supposed to know that their gardener is lapsed on their business license?
Ah, I think that might be helpful for me, the resident who's dealing with this for the first time, to add some wording in there. I think you hit on a good point. Since it is the responsibility of the owner or their agent to ensure that the person is properly and currently licensed, any infraction will then become the responsibility of the homeowner. Could that be tolerable? I mean, I'll ask my.
Can I just, I think we spoke about this, and this had to do with, right, if a gardener who, or somebody hires somebody for a weekend project, let's say, and the chainsaws come out, and they're not a business licensed or contractor, you were trying, the thought was, we were trying to get at the fact that those people should also, and I thought it was that they are foregoing their ability to then get a business license or come here for legitimate work. It wasn't so much about a penalty, but we're saying if you, if a contractor comes here and is not licensed or is hired to do this work, that they would have some sort of consequences, not necessarily the tree replacement penalty. And that would be something having to do with their business for a year or et cetera, right?
And that's certainly the intent of the language, but Councilmember Jacobowski brings up a good point about property owners not realizing that the person they've just hired has a lapsed business license. You know, I didn't think about that. Of course, the intention here was to penalize the gardeners who are doing work without a license. That was the intention. We do have gardeners who perform work, who do get lapsed, who have lapsed business licenses. And so we have both conditions in fact.
Sure.
And I don't know how better to phrase it, though.
But I see it, yeah. The issue is coming forth, and as a homeowner, when you are having someone to come and work on your trees, one of the first things you should do is, of course, make sure that they've got the proper permits if needed. And just check, I ran into a situation the other day, where I was talking to somebody who was doing some work in town, and I said, oh, I like what you're doing, you know, I might ask you for a bid, and then I looked at their vehicles and nothing had tags on it, and I said, oh, are you licensed to work in town? He said, well, not really. So, great work, but, you know.
Did you get your go app out?
I don't take anything with me when I'm walking. That is my one downtime. It is up to the city when I'm out walking. So the point being, you know, the homeowner still has that responsibility, and maybe if we can guide them, even if it goes into that helpful little tool in the back, make sure that the people you hire have A, B, C, D.
Yeah, check box. And actually, another remedy could be that we publish all of those tree trimmers and gardeners who have active business licenses, and we keep that up to date. And provide that at the counter or on the website.
Great, yes. And moving along on that, because I don't want to take a lot of time, but I already have, so item 3A, I really love the way we've added, you know, the restoration plan, so again, that homeowner understands what this terminology means. Moving on to E, if there's not enough room on my property to plant the required trees after I've sort of messed up here, it says that they can be planted on city property. I think it would just be helpful to spell out by whom. So whether it's the city and I'm paying for them, or I don't think you want my contractor working on your property, but I think we need to spell it out. Below that, I think that's really helpful. Item F, you know, in talking about the owner having, selecting trees from a certain category. Moving on to payment of penalty, that would be item J. If the violator does not complete planting of a replacement trees within a allotted period of time, you may procure the plant and replace the trees. I think we need to add in there somewhere that and all expenses will be charged to the homeowner. And personally, I don't know, using a debt collection agency is going to give us the impact that obviously a lien would work real well with, or a civil action. If I'm not going to follow up with planting, I'm probably not going to be responsive to a debt collection agency, but, you know, that's not a hill I want to die on. And then I'm going to flip back to that helpful little guide later. I really like the simple language in which it's written, guideline to the city's tree ordinance, starting on page, it's harder to read here, 16-38. I do have some grammatical things that I will separately hand to you, but I just think this is grand for people who haven't done this kind of work before. Let's see, there was something else. And, you know, always spell out planning commission and things like that. Also, I think it's important for, I don't know how you said that. I'm done. I think this is a really, really improved document, and I think it's becoming more and more owner-friendly. So thank you for all the work on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacobowski. We all appreciate the thorough review. And just on this, the guideline document, there is still some incorrect, if you look at like 1643, it talks about unintentional, unintentional, I know we talked it, and Director Cervantes will circulate a revised version, because there are errors in this based upon the direction that we're going.
Mayor, if I might, the materials that were submitted at the back that are intended for the public, those are not up for your approval tonight. Those are just samples from a design perspective.
They're wonderful.
Of what they might look like. So these are not intended to be the final documents. The community development department may make several changes along the way. So this is just to give you a flavor. You don't need to be concerned if there are things that you see that, oh, that doesn't seem accurate anymore. We will fix all of those before it goes out.
Right, it just went out with the agenda packet, so the public's already seen this.
Right, yes, it was intended to go out as a sample for design purposes, not for content purposes.
Okay. Councilmember Wong and Jacobowski have given their comments. Councilmember Tal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only problem that I have presently is on 1611, page 6, the top paragraph, and I don't think this was intended, but you say, "A property owner is not required to obtain a permit for removing any dead foliage or branches that are less than three inches in diameter from any tree." Then you say, "Any trimming of a tree where more than 5% of any live foliage or limbs are be trimmed or removed shall be performed by a state licensed contractor in accordance with ISA standards." The ISA standards deal that you referred to earlier, deal with mature trees. The way this is written, it means that if I have a non-heritage, non-established, non-oak tree, I still have to get a permit if I'm going to trim back more than 5% of the tree. So it's not, we used the language before under 2A, 1 and 2, but we don't pass it here. So if I have a gardener who is going to trim just a tree out in the front of my yard, that might even be a bush, but for whatever reason people consider it a tree, and they're doing 4.9% cutback, whatever that may be, then I have to go through the permit process, or I have to do it, or I, and that's not intended, I don't think. I think what you meant there was a oak heritage or established tree. Okay, that should be stated in there. The other thing is, is the 5%. We now have this area in between 5 and 10% that would require not to get a permit, but to use an ISA, or to use a state licensed contractor. I think that's going to cause some confusion. I don't like limiting, if we're going to require a permit in certain instances, I don't like the requirement for a homeowner that they have to sit there and assess, gosh, is that 5%? Is that, you know, let's make those consistent with each other and say that a property owner may trim no more than, you know, 10% of an established heritage or oak tree. And when it comes to a heritage, when it comes to an established tree that's 15 or 6, I think it is, the diameter, you're probably not going to do that yourself. So I don't see that being a problem. So I would like that we're more than, you know, tie in the percentages on 2A, 1 and 2, to the percentages on E, because that's going to leave a gap in there, and make sure that it's not, it states in there that more than 5, more than whatever percent of any live foliage of a heritage established or oak tree. Those are my only comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Giddy?
Yeah, I think one of your real challenges here is going to be education, because I think that's the challenge. I don't need an answer now, but please think about that. I like that you're going to have a list of li- I like that you're going to have a list of licensed tree trimmers. And you might want to add to that gardeners. You might want to add to that that they have signed and acknowledge that they're aware of the, of this ordinance. Because that might be a good stop back for you.
Thank you. And I have the same paragraphs, the same concerns as some Councilmember Jacobowski and Councilmember Tal as well on that one paragraph. I have it circled as a question for you. So, I know that it does require, I'm referring to, what is it? On page 1611 of my copy, the E about the property owner rights was, did need to jive with the percentages elsewhere or else, and call out the trees that this falls within. But I appreciate that the homeowner can do that. And I know we need to allow that for normal maintenance. We spoke about the projects, oh, I have one question, sorry. On the same page, 1611, and this has to do with the tree removal permit procedure and application content. So, I'm in 2B, just a little bit farther down. And it specifies that an ISA Level 1 tree risk assessment report be prepared by the certified arborist. Do you see that language there? Is that what we have now? And is that like the arborist's report that we saw related to the trees before? Because I have seen very different reports from our own urban forester, for example, when we have tree removals in the city that are much more detailed because there was no, for example, assessments individually, tree by tree, other than photos and these tables listed in the earlier, you know, matter that came before us. So, I'm wondering, do we need to attach an example of what an ISA tree, when you're putting together the workbook for residents? Sorry, I'm not speaking. That we just have a sheet so we can see, so that it's clear to everybody involved, whether it's the arborist doing the report and the homeowner, what to expect, as well as planning commission and DRC. So, we're all on the same page. Because I did think it was, it varies more than I would expect. And how it's even perceived, what we saw tonight, did not seem to be the same as I have seen that our own urban forester does. So, I know that there are higher level assessments, but at least give an example of what you're talking about for that.
Okay.
Would be important for me to see. And then the other was, I suggest changing the projects requiring other approvals. That section is important. And we talked, and you've already corrected the intentional, this is unintentional. So, that's the handout. So, what we actually are talking about, it's reflected in this handout. Although we've been, or just for ease of reference tonight, we've been talking about the pages in the book. But actually, the correct language about violations is in this handout, which has the penalty added back in about the cost of the replacement tree as part of the penalty. And one last point. I know that we are facing in some tree appeals, the fact that some home, sometimes when trees die and homeowners need to have them removed, and in certain areas of the city, because their landscaping is already very full on their lot, or the location of the removed tree, they're not able to plant the adequate amount of trees that is required by our matrix. And I just, it didn't sound to me, I'm sorry, and I will get to the section, but I was using both of them right now. But it still did not say, it said that they had to still comply with the trees, but this is the point that Councilmember Jacobowski said, they can be planted in the city or elsewhere.
Page 16-72.
Thank you. But I was concerned because also we need to have the ability to reduce the amount down when it's not practical, when you can't fit two 36-inch boxes in your front yard because you already have a very full canopy from your neighbor's tree and the other existing tree, and you only have a certain size yard. So, I'm wondering, is that now going to be captured and handled better in this? And what section is the revised concept?
Yes, so, section 231905, under tree removal permit procedures, 5F.
Wait, hold on, 23.
Oh, sorry.
1905.
23.19.05.
Okay.
5.
Yeah.
5 is requirements for tree removal permit. 5F.
Yes.
Provides for myself, the urban forester. The new addition to that language is, given the ability of the urban forester to reduce the tree requirement, that was absent, is absent now. And so, the urban forester doesn't have the authority to reduce the size of trees without at least coming to me. And so, by adding his title in here, in there, it allows for him to make the decision at the field.
And Mayor, I think these are for the violators that we can move them onto the city property.
Right, yeah.
The bad guys.
Okay, so then we'll leave it as it is then. I understand now, I was looking for it in the violation section, but it's here under the requirements for the replacement section, if you will. Okay, thank you. So, that answered the question. I appreciate the clarification. I don't have any other further comments. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, so we need to open this up for a public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak to, on this subject? Either, not a person, I don't think, but anybody online, or were there comments submitted by email?
I did not receive any comments in advance and do not have any current comments via email. And I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. So, I'll bring this item, we'll close the public comment. I'll bring this back to council for discussion. I have one other point. Will we have this corrected ordinance attached somehow? Or part of the public record, the corrected version because of the penalty? Or is it just enough that we're doing it tonight on first reading, we could add it in?
That looked like the city attorney.
Mayor, yes, the question, yes, we can read that change in if that's the direction of the council.
Okay, so that specific paragraph that we have included in the new, is that what you're?
Correct, we can, we can read that section in. And just when the motion is being made, you can just say, "The motion is stated, just amended" when you get to the ordinance.
And that'll be that, thank you, I appreciate it.
And if I could just add, there are several other changes, notably the ones raised by yourself and Councilmember Jacobowski and also Councilmember Tal. Would you like us to bring this back with the final edits all in there for you to see one last time?
I think since we made a number of minor ones, it would be helpful to make sure that they all appear. I believe, Dr. Marlowe, were you also making notes?
No, but Director Servantes was. He's a much faster typing guy.
If you're confident you've got everything, Mayor, we may not need it back again.
I don't, I would suggest this is an item that's very important to several of you. And you probably will want to see the final version before you adopt it.
Okay, so if there's, then we will.
Continue?
Continue this item until the next meeting?
You would move to continue the public hearing?
I need a motion to move to continue the public hearing on Agenda Item 16.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
That was enthusiastic.
Mayor Shepherd-Gron.
Yes.
Laughing at Steve.
All right, next we have. Do we want to keep going, do we need a break? We're on our, we have two left? Continue, two left in this section. Okay, so let's keep going. Adoption Emergency Ordinance Number O-20-1377-U, Extending the Interim Ordinance Regulating Accessory Dwelling Units in the City. Can we have a presentation, please, Director Servantes?
Yes, thank you. Part of an earlier motion of council, if you recall, was the adoption of the second reading of the ADU ordinance. Due to some timing issues with respect to the expiration of the urgency ordinance on ADUs, which is set to expire on December 12th, we had no choice but to also present to council a request for an extension of that urgency ordinance. That we don't have a period of time in which we don't have a law to enforce. We're talking about a matter of about six days. And so, just to make sure we have all our ducks in a row, yes, we want to make sure that we also adopt this urgency ordinance, which is an extension of the current one, that allows for an additional one-year period to adopt an ordinance. But again, that's just a technicality as the ordinance was already adopted by virtue of second reading. This ordinance will then be, this urgency ordinance will then be voided on December 18th when the current ordinance, which was adopted during consent, takes effect. And so, that's, this is a mere technicality, a required one. And that concludes the presentation. I recommend that the city council, in this case, motion to read by title only, waive further readings and adopt ordinance Number 20-1377 Urgency, an ordinance of the City of San Marino, extending interim ordinance 20-1363-U and amending the city's regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, also known as second units or ADUs, and declaring the urgency thereof.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Director Servantes from councilmembers? Councilmember Wong, any questions?
No, I don't have any question, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see if you shook your head or not. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess as a side note, I'm just full of exclamation marks. Is this mostly Scott Weider's work? It is so encompassing, what is now allowed, removing the minimum lot sizes, being able to take those ADUs up to quite a significantly large, significant size. I mean, it just goes on and on. It feels so much more drastic, isn't it?
Yeah, I would say that he likely has some influence, as he's a housing advocate. But I can't specifically tell the council that one of the Senate bills or Senewillows was drafted by him. But yes, it does essentially eliminate our opportunity for regulating ADUs on specific lot sizes. That was kind of the major change with the new laws that are out there.
All righty, I guess we have no choice. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
I have no questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for putting this together and also noting the gap coverage. So, I appreciate that. I will open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak in, nobody here, it looks like, but anybody online or who has submitted previously or currently an email comment to you?
I do not have any email comments either previously or currently submitted. And I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. So, I'll close the public comment period, our public hearing, and I will bring this item back to council for discussion. Do we have any comments or a motion in a second?
Let's see. I have a motion.
Good, that's great, go ahead.
I move to read by title only, waive further reading and adopt ordinance Number O-20-1377-U, an ordinance of the City of San Marino, extending the interim ordinance Number O-20-1360-U and amending the city's regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, also known as second units or ADUs, and declaring the urgency thereof.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd-Gron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are now, sorry, we have adoption of resolution, Agenda Item 18, adoption of Resolution Number R-20-19, adopting the Community Development Block Grant Project for fiscal year 2021. Can we have a presentation, please, Director Thro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be concise on this one. Public Works is seeking your approval to request the County of Los Angeles Community Development Commission reserve next fiscal year's grant allocation for a future sidewalk project. We typically bank three years of CDVG allocations so that there is enough funding to construct a worthwhile project. This request is consistent with our practice the last two years. Next fiscal year, we expect to have adequate funds for a sidewalk project, which we will propose as part of your upcoming capital improvement plan process. The council is required to conduct the public hearing on this item. And at the conclusion of public comment and your deliberation, the department recommends that you adopt Resolution R-20-19 so that funds will be available for the future sidewalk project. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you for your brevity and information. Do we have any questions? I will start with Councilmember Tal.
I have no questions, thank you very much.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No, no question, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
And I don't have any questions. Thank you for the staff report as well, it was clear what the project is. I need to open up the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? Saying no, none? Do we have anybody online through the Zoom platform or via email that has submitted a public comment on this agenda?
I do not have any public comments either on email or Zoom.
Thank you very much, I'll close the public hearing. I know this is exciting. Hold yourself there, Director Thro. I'll bring this back to council for a discussion or a motion. Do I have any from councilmembers?
I move to adopt Resolution Number R-20-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Marino, California, adopting the projected use of funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 202021.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd-Gron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Before we go to new business matters, I'd like to have a five-minute break. And we're going to proceed through our new business items. The first, Item 19, receive and file financial report for the first quarter, July 2020 through September 2020. Welcome, Director Thon, can we have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. Tonight I'll be reporting on the financial status report for the first quarter. Unfortunately, tonight, the treasurer wasn't able to attend for personal matters. But fortunately for me, I'll be able to present the cash investment section as well. With the respect of time for City Council, my presentation will be brief. And this is a receiving file, so full detail is in the staff report. So, I'm just going to touch on highlights tonight. Let's get my clicker to work here. It's not working, Scott.
I can move it.
Yeah, okay, next slide. So, the first quarter, this covers July, August, and September for the financial status report and the cash investment for three months. What is the next slide? On the revenues, we ended the month at $1.8 million for the year, $2.1 million prior year. If we look at the general fund and the public safety fund, the first quarter is the lowest revenue quarter for the city as the significant property tax comes in late November, December. During this quarter, we received a portion of the property tax, the unsecured property tax portion, which came in 2.3% higher than last year. So, that's a good sign. Building a property tax. Building permits and plan checks remain robust and is slightly coming in higher than last year, so that's a good sign as well. But due to COVID impacts, we do continue to see softness on the sales tax and business license side. Recreation facilities, as up in libraries, as facilities are closed, continue to, the revenues continue to be lower than last year. And investment interest or investment income continues to be low as well compared to last year as yields continue to be low. But overall, this was expected, and staff continues to monitor revenues very closely. Next slide, please. On the, moving on to the expenditure side, we expended $7.1 million during the quarter and $6.2 million last year. There is a considerable high amount if we compare on the public safety side, $767,000 difference from this year versus last year. And the main driver really comes out of four items. Number one is that we had an extra payroll this particular quarter. That was approximately about $350,000, so that contributes to that big increase. We also had our new MOUs and increased pension costs that was reflected in the quarter. Number three, we also had less salary savings compared to the last year's quarter. And lastly, we had the deployment of our strike team for the Bobcat, Lake, and Apple fires. The good thing for that is that we, the city does get reimbursed 100% for those expenses, and we are in the process of getting that reimbursed, and that will be coming in in the future months. Moving on to the next slide. On the net income for the quarter, it's broken up between the general fund and public safety fund. As I mentioned earlier, the revenues are really light during this quarter as we wait for our larger property tax revenue coming in in the second quarter and third quarter. So our net income does come in a lot lower. If we were to look at our first quarter this year, it was a negative $1.2 million compared to last year was $750,000 less. And on the public safety fund side, we came in, net income was a minus $4.1 million versus last year at $3.4 million last year. Moving on to the last, the next slide, sorry. For the fund balance, we ended the September month at $9.7 million on the general fund, but compared to last year, it was $12.7 million. The reason that's lower is because back in February 2020, we transferred $5 million to the CIP fund. The CIP fund balance ended the month at $17 million versus last year of that $13.8 million. Overall, the city's financial status for Q1 came in as expected, and there are no fiscal concerns to report to the city council at this time. Next slide, please. For the total cash investments, this bar graph here, if you looked at the last, what, four months here, June, July, August, September, that tends to continue to creep down, as I mentioned, the net income, as our revenue is less than our expenditures, that tends to drop, but then will pick up during the second quarter. The detail regards to our cash investments is provided to the city council monthly by the city treasurer and myself, and that is also, was presented to the council tonight on, as consent. At the end of September 30th, we ended the total cash investment at $29.8 million versus last year at $28.6 million. And next slide, please. And this, this is the last slide here, and the yield, you don't want to really see yields going down, but unfortunately, as you know, we are in this COVID environment, and during this quarter, life and our money market dipped below 1%. The treasury yields are showing little sign of life during this quarter. They're, it ticked slightly up during this quarter, but at the same time, it's really flat at near 0%. And as you've heard, the feds made a statement that they will continue keeping the rates low at near 0% till 2023, so we do expect yields to continue to stay relatively low. With that said, that concludes my presentation tonight. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Thon, and I do hope that our treasurer gives her our best wishes.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? I will start with Councilmember Toll.
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No questions, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, Paul, I appreciate that, the report, and hoping this will look better soon in our next quarter report.
We should.
So I appreciate that. I'd like to open it up now for public comments. Do we have any public comments on this matter, by email or any virtual way?
I do not have any emails, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you. So I'll bring this back to council and see if we have any comments or need to have discussion or if we will proceed with a motion, which is a receive and file. Do I have a motion? I move to receive and file the financial report reflecting the city's revenue and expenditures as of September 30, 2020.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Grommet?
Yes. Thank you. We are moving to item, new business item 20, adoption of urgency ordinance O-20-1373-U and introduction of first reading of ordinance number O-20-1372 relating to prohibitive items at public assemblies. Can we have a presentation, Chief Incaj?
Yes, we can. Mayor and city council, if you recall, on September 25th, city council meeting, we moved to introduce the, this ordinance, 0201370, any concern prohibited items at public assemblies. As the summer went on and with different demonstrations, the, we found through our training and information that we see from other departments, that some demonstrators were utilizing laser pointers, laser pens, and that was causing injury and blindness to police officers during the demonstration. So what this ordinance does is it simply adds those items as prohibited items as part of the new urgency ordinance. Staff recommends the city council waive full reading of ordinance number, sorry, yeah. Ordinance number 0201372 and introduces first reading by title only, ordinance number 0201372. If the city council concurs with staff's recommendations and appropriate motion, I move to waive full reading, introduce, or first reading by title only, ordinance number 0201372. And then staff also recommends the city council waive full reading, urgency ordinance number 0201373-U. Read the ordinance by title only and adopt ordinance number 020173-U, which will be effective immediately. I'm available for any question.
And just to clarify, Mayor and council, it's instead of zero, it's O. Different number, O dash, so I was just.
It's a letter, not the number.
It's a big O, not a narrow zero.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the chief from members of council? Councilmember Wong, would you start? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any question, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Toll?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
And I thank you for catching this important matter for the safety of our officers and personnel, and appreciate you bringing up the corrected additional version, so thank you. Do we have any public comments on this matter, virtually or by email?
I do not have any emails, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Okay, so I'll bring this back to council and see if we have any comments or if somebody wants to make a motion, or say, just a seesay question?
I, I move to waive full reading, introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number O-20-1372, an ordinance in City of San Marino amending Article 5 of Chapter Roman No. 14 of the San Marino Municipal Code to add Section 14.05.04 to prohibit possession of, carrying, possession or carrying of specified items while attending a demonstration, rally, protest, picket line, or public assembly.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, before you vote on that, can I just read one additional section into the ordinance? That ordinance number O-20-1371-U, which is the prior urgency ordinance, is hereby repealed by this ordinance. Thank you. So they're not inconsistent.
So amended.
All right, and do we, do you second the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you, okay. Roll call. Thank you very much, city attorney.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Grommet?
Yes.
As a second motion, I move, I moved to waive full reading, read by title only, introduce and adopt ordinance number O-20-1373-U, an emergency ordinance of the City of San Marino amending Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the San Marino Municipal Code to add Section 14.05.04 to prohibit possession or carrying of specified items while attending a demonstration, rally, protest, picket line, or public assembly.
I'll second.
Does this also, I'm just checking with city attorney, does this also need to have the additional language to repeal the prior?
Yes, it does, Madam Mayor, thank you.
And appeal the prior emergency ordinance number?
And also repeal the prior non-urgency ordinance as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
131, I believe it's 1372.
I didn't understand what you said. Could you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes. It's to repeal both the urgency ordinance 1371-U and also the non-urgency ordinance 1372.
I move, I amend my motion accordingly.
And do you?
Thank you.
Second?
And I will second that, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepard Grommet?
Yes. Thank you, chief. Next, we are, back to community development, Director Servantes, just in case you were missing him.
I know, you know, it's been so long, really, Director Servantes, I have missed you. 21, adoption of urgency ordinance number O-20-1376-U, an introduction of first reading of ordinance O-20-1375 regulating third-party food delivery service commission. Can we please have a presentation, Director Servantes?
Thank you, Mayor and council. At the council meeting on October 30th, 2020, the council directed staff to return with an ordinance that places a cap on fees charged to restaurants for food delivery services. The growing trend in some surrounding cities include similar types of adoptions of ordinances that place similar caps. Our research has found through survey that those caps have been roughly about 15%, actually consistently 15% in most surrounding cities and also cities up north. And so, of course, the, the concerns have been expressed very well by the Colonial Kitchen and representatives of, representatives of that restaurant that such fees undercut some of the profits that the, that the business is certainly needing at this moment. Staff has provided the council with two ordinances, one being an urgency ordinance as well as a permanent ordinance. Staff is going to recommend the council the adoption of the urgency ordinance by virtue of when it takes effect, and that would be tomorrow if adopted. The permanent ordinance would need to go through first reading, second reading, actually, it would just need to go through first reading, from my understanding, and effective 30 days thereafter. The urgency would certainly go into effect, as I mentioned, tomorrow if adopted. And so staff is recommending the adoption of the urgency ordinance that places a 15% cap on delivery fees for third-party vendors. And as I mentioned, if adopted, goes into effect tomorrow. So with that said, staff recommends that the city council waive full reading of the urgency ordinance number O-20-1376-U. Read the ordinance by title and adopt urgency ordinance number O-20-1376-U. And the motion would read as follows. I move to waive full reading, read by title only, introduce and adopt urgency ordinance number O-20-1376-U. An urgency ordinance of the City of San Marino amending Chapter 14, the miscellaneous section of the code, to add Article 19 to regulate third-party food vendor services commissions and declare the urgency thereof. And I open for questions.
All right. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I've got a question. So on page 21-6, under the definition of a third-party delivery service, who picks up food and beverages from no fewer than 20 separate locations, so if I want to start a service and I want to go with, say, 15 locations, this doesn't bind me?
That's correct. The way that it's been defined, yes.
Is there any way that we can change that? I mean, it just, it just seems to be open for someone to say, I think I'll, I'll make a deal on this.
And I would, what I'll say, I'll turn it over to our city attorney Stephanie Cowell to sort of help bring, or shine some light as to those types of regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Just to answer Councilmember Jacobowski, if the council wanted to lower that number from 20 to, say, 15 or a different number, that is at the pleasure of the council. This was a definition that was taken from, I believe it was Los Angeles' code, and so since that, that one's been adopted and there haven't been any issues, we decided to use that number 20. However, as I said, if, at the pleasure of the council, if you want that number to be changed, that is what we can do.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like council to consider entertaining that because 20 would certainly cover every restaurant in town and some of the neighboring community per, for, of restaurants, so we don't want to set anyone up to come in behind the big guys and open up a business. So I'd like to take that number quite low.
All right. We could discuss?
Sure.
You can bring that up?
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
And Councilmember Toll?
Um, I had, the only thing I'd like that third food, third-party food delivery service, and we could discuss the issue of 20, is that it should reference in there that it's 20 separately owned and operated food service establishments wherever located, wherever situated, because I might see someone say, well, we don't have 20 in the city, we don't serve 20 in the city. So I just want to close that, that loophole. I'm a little, and I'm a little concerned about the, the 15% versus something a little higher, but I also want to make clear that this does not include tips. For example, if I were to order from Dinner Dash, DoorDash tonight, they will ask me to put in a tip amount. And usually, I can be the lowest, but don't tell anybody. But, you know, it's anywhere between 15 and 40% or whatever it is. tell anybody. But, you know, it's anywhere between 15 and 40%, or whatever it is. That's not included in the restriction. Is that correct? So they're going to, they're going to charge me a fee, and then they're going to ask if I want to tip the guy.
That is not a fee that the 3PD charges the restaurant. That is a money that you give the driver.
And so, but if you take a look at it, they have to disclose any tip or gratuity that would be paid to the person delivering the food or beverages. So we use it as itemized cost, but I guess the delivery fee is separate.
Yeah, under F, page 21-6, that would, that language would seem to preclude tipping.
Yes, it does. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I will sit here quietly. Thank you.
And also, just one more comment. The definition of purchase price, if you look at page 21-5, also excludes taxes, gratuity, and gratuity, or gratuity, sorry.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Put my voice.
You do this. Put them. Councilmember Wong, did you have?
Yes, thank you for doing the research. Just curious, did you see that it would go into effect tomorrow?
If the urgency ordinance is adopted tonight, yes, goes into effect tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Director Cervantes, does this impact just the restaurants within San Marino or any third-party delivery coming into San Marino?
I presume that it impacts inside our boundaries, but I would, I'll leave that question to Stephanie Cowell, our City Attorney, to answer that.
Would this impact delivery from a South Pasadena restaurant to somebody in San Marino?
As it's currently drafted, it would not just limit it to San Marino, but we can do that if that's, again, the pleasure of the council.
And how would you enforce this?
The only mechanism to enforce this would be upon the business, where if they find that they're being charged more than 50%, for example, they can file for refund with the third-party delivery services. They're, it would be difficult to enforce this where staff sort of intervenes and goes into looking at receipts or what have you. It's just, it's going to be tough.
Yeah, it's going to be very difficult, yeah.
Vice Mayor, on that same note, then, since you did the lead-off, may I ask, how would we immediately let all of the services know that this is in effect?
Yeah, it's a great question. What we would do is contact those providers. If this is adopted, or whichever version of this is adopted, we would send them these provisions, if not provide them the ability of posting it at their sites or websites or what have you.
Have you done any analysis? My instincts are, if you do this, you're going to reduce the third-party delivery into San Marino, because no one will economically want to take that on. So it's not going to be a savings to the restaurant or a saving to the citizen. It's going to be a removal of a convenience.
Well, one of the, so that level of research was not done, but I think there's some value in the survey that we put together finding those cities that have-
That survey, though, is just of the regulations that cities have put on. It has not been on the impact of the business, and it hasn't looked at what market rates are for the third-party delivery, and it's been significant for the restaurant industry.
Right, and what I was going to get to with the survey is, you notice that none of the cities are surrounding us, and so I'm not, I'm not aware of surrounding cities putting a similar cap on delivery services. And so with that, if we're sort of in a bubble, I guess, to say the least.
Have you surveyed other restaurants?
I have not.
Okay. So this is the reacting to Colonial Kitchen's one request?
At this moment, yes.
Okay.
I was also wondering, to follow up on the question, this applies to any delivery into San Marino, correct, from, that's what you just said, right?
It can, yes.
But if we want to focus on protecting our own restaurants, we can, and maybe this is a better question for the City Attorney, can we, when we say retail food establishment on page 21-6, you know, and it defines it, can we actually specify, these are retail food establishments within the city limits of San Marino? So we're actually doing this to benefit, you know, we're not doing it to penalize outside, or penalize wouldn't be the right word, but to affect outside the city. We're just doing it in reference to our own retail food establishments within city boundaries. Is that possible to modify it?
That's possible, Mayor, and all we would do, as you've already pointed out, is clarify the definition for retail food establishment, so as to limit it to retail food establishments within the City of San Marino.
All right, and I think that also might answer some of the concerns in enforcement, because we obviously don't have that many, but it would benefit our own restaurants, and it would be a smaller list that then would have to be monitored perhaps, and informing DoorDash to keep track of, or whatever might be the food delivery service. Is that possible from your end, Director Cervantes, and would this make it easier than, more practical to implement?
Well, still certainly going to be a challenge with enforcement. One of the, and the attorneys, if they can correct me if I'm wrong here, the adoption of an urgency ordinance, the initial adoption is just a 45-day lifespan, if I'm not correct. Is that true?
So in this instance, since the municipal code section that we're amending isn't limited to the zoning code, there isn't that same extension period that you're thinking of, Director Cervantes?
Okay, understood. So, yeah, I was getting at, if this is a typical urgency ordinance, it's only live for 45 days. So we have a short period of time in order to educate and enforce and look for mechanisms for enforcement. Being that that's on the case here, you know, the concerns still stand as far as how to really maneuver around these ordinance. And I, at this point, I'm not taking a deep dive as to, number one, how these other cities with current caps are doing it, and how we're going to sort of implement this kind of process.
Aside from putting all the delivery services on notice.
Right. That would be step one.
Wouldn't, I mean, the enforcement's going to come through these, the restaurants in town.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I think it would be easier if we had a finite number of San Marino restaurants that we're trying to support in their efforts to stay alive and not make it such a large, potentially unwieldy thing.
I'm really concerned here that we're trying to save San Marino restaurants, but we're really going to be hurting them by doing this significantly.
Vice Mayor, what analysis would be helpful?
Listen, I kind of feel like this is throwing a hanger down to the shadow, and it's not well thought out or researched yet. I'm aware that market price for third-party delivery is between 20 and 25%. The range is 15 to 30%. I'm also aware that restaurants, many times, have different menus for the third-party delivery when they charge delivery fees to cover that nut. I've also seen data that, from several restaurant groups, that this is the fastest-growing segment of their business, and, you know, I'm getting concerned that we're reacting to Colonial Kitchen, and in doing so, we're going to be hurting, you know, our citizens' use of third-party delivery services. And, you know, on a $50 check, it's, we're talking about $5? It's a convenience fee, and, you know, my daughters pay that $5 all the time. It's a convenience. They don't have to go out. So I don't think we want to make a third-party, the cost of a third-party delivery be as if you were dining in the restaurant, because it's a convenience.
Vice Mayor, man?
Please.
You know, we saw something just the other day in some guiding principles as we move along with COVID, and when I saw the bullet list, it said, only go in two stores for shopping when you absolutely have to. So feeling about where we are today, all masked up, and the fact that this might become more severe, we might become more reliant on delivery, and I think for that reason, we should, I don't know where the answer is, but I think it would be beneficial to think this through a little bit more.
I think we got to tap the brakes on this one, because if we are locked down more, we're going to desire more third-party delivery. And if the third-party deliverers aren't making money by delivering food and services to our community, our community's not going to get that food and service. They're going to have to go out themselves and get it.
The City Manager, Marla.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I just want to indicate that although it's true that the smaller cities around us have not yet moved to a cap, Pasadena has, we've seen their proposal. They moved to a 15% cap. They did do a survey of all of their restaurants, which is a much higher number than all of our restaurants, and the vast majority, they had a number of percentages in their staff report, and so I can't remember right now if it was the 79% number or 92% number, but it was a really significant number. Of the smaller restaurants, really, were looking for some sort of cap. To the Vice Mayor's point, I have not seen anybody do an analysis then on whether the restaurants were, so to speak, happy with the cap once it went into effect, or if in fact the third-party delivery services pulled away from them. So, but we do have that large city next to us that has moved to that, and they were very pleased with that effort. It is true that we've only heard from Colonial Kitchen. I just, from a data perspective, would point out that we only have 10 or 12 restaurants in the city, so one restaurant could reflect 10% of all of the restaurants in the city, depending on how you feel about that. You could do it on a trial period. If you could direct us to do a little bit more research, as you recall, this is only on the agenda because a few of you wanted to see it. We put this on here quickly for you. If there's more information you'd like and it's worth looking into, we can certainly do that. If you know you don't want to move forward, then we certainly don't need to spend any more staff time on this. So it's really your call to tell us how you'd like us to proceed on this.
And I think, how tough would enforcement be? This would be impossible.
Well, enforcement would not fall to the city.
Well, no, but I mean, it would be required for, what, self-reporting? Uber Eats would have to come and say, oh, I'm only going to charge 15% if I'm going to San Marino.
It would fall to the restaurants to enforce it. That's why, that's who we would reach out to. We would give them the ordinance. They would be the ones-
How are we going to let restaurants in surrounding areas know that we have a different service charge?
I certainly think that's a much bigger challenge. I mean, I, nobody's asking my opinion, but I would offer that I think that if we're trying to protect San Marino businesses, then that's what we're trying to protect.
Let's keep talking about it and think about it, but I'm just really worried that we're going to be hurting our residents, and we're going to be hurting the restaurants, and we're going to be hurting those third-party delivery people. And I think free market system is going to work out where it's going to be a win-win-win for everybody.
And as an example, and I'm sorry, maybe there's a point of water here.
It's long gone. Clearly out of control.
We moved into the discussion stage before hearing from our, we moved well past the question stage. Do you want me to wait and have the public comments?
That would be good, but-
Okay, then I'll wait.
It seemed to have lost all control in that, this section, so I think we're going to close the council question period with an emphasis on questions, and see if the public has any questions or comments on this issue. So I would like to ask Acting City Clerk Merlo if we have anybody who sent an email or has tried to make a question or comment on Zoom platform.
I do not have any emails, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. So I'll bring this back to council for discussion, and if Councilmember Tal did you want to lead off, but I appreciate you for letting us do that.
Thank you, Mayor. As perhaps a point of example, there was a restaurant in Alhambra that, that we used called Spanish, and Spanish went off of all delivery, and, because they couldn't make any money, and then, and then Uber Eats, and I believe DoorDash lowered their price, and bang, they're back on. And so I do believe that the restaurants in town have a choice, and that is to make themselves available to only the third-party deliveries that offer a charge that will allow them to make money, that demand a charge that will allow them to make money. So if, let's just say there's a restaurant in town called the San Marino Grill, the San Marino Grill doesn't like what one of these, it's not Grubhub or Uber Eats or DoorDash, it's, what's the, what's that? Yes. They don't have to offer their services on that. And I think that Vice Mayor Yudi is right, and there's, the market's got to play, I feel, for the San Marino Grill, but if people want to buy from the San Marino Grill, they could still use, you know, DoorDash or Grubhub or Uber Eats and pay that 15% charge.
No, they're paying 25.
25.
This would regulate all of the third-party delivery charges, and all of the Postmates is a particular one that Colonial Kitchen was referencing, and so that's why we've been informally referring to this as the Postmates one, that all of the delivery services are charging fees in excess of-
I, but it says in here, in staff's research on this topic, it appears that Grubhub and Uber Eats already charge 15% for delivery of food.
Yes.
So they have, they have come, they have assessed their market, and those that are offended by a charge greater than that, because they can't, they can't make money or believe they can't make money, then they discontinue that service and find something a little more competitive, such as Grubhub and Uber Eats. And I don't know what DoorDash charges. So I would be, I would be in favor of putting the brakes on this until we do a little more research before we jump in and do something that we subsequently may regret.
I wanted to follow up on that and ask a question of Director Cervantes. Can you please explain to me the different services that pick up from our local resident restaurants? And tell me who is 15 and who is 25? Or does it depend on the service, or does it depend on the deal that they have with the restaurant? For example, San Marino Grill versus Colonial Kitchen? Because I'm confused at this point, and we've had a lot of percentages. I think 25% is way too high.
Yeah, I'm not aware of each individual business and what they sort of agree to with respect to this third-party vendor. I don't have that information, but similar to government results of research, I had also found that the sort of market had dictated the lowering of the percentages from these third-party vendors. And in some of the articles that I read, the two that I specified in the staff report had already started to drop their rates. That was all they were referring to with respect to the staff report, but I don't know specifically here in town what the percentages are.
Or whether any, so anecdotally, I'm sorry, so Councilmember Tal, but I have not ordered from San Marino Grill, so I'm just trying to understand. Are you saying that they, the process was similar to what happened to the restaurant in Alhambra, that they dropped and went with ones that offered them a lower amount?
Oh, they dropped it altogether and then came back in when the lower amounts were offered. So there is a competitive marketplace out there for these delivery fees. I believe, and that's why I'd like more information on that, to make sure that we're not cutting off our local restaurants' ability to offer home delivery through these services, and that there is a market for them that will fit whatever their margin is. But right now, I kind of agree, we're moving a little too fast, but understandably so, because we've had a request, and we decided to look into it. I, what I'm saying is, we're looking into it. I don't think we have enough data points right now in order to make this decision and make sure that both the restaurants and our people in town are protected.
So would you want to just to continue this in order to get more information as to our specific restaurants in town, then?
Not only our, it's more than that. It's the residents.
Okay, I'm just asking.
It is.
One at a time. It's too much if we have this and it gets out of control. Again, I just don't have the patience at this point in time.
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes, that's, I think we should look at it from a standpoint of what services are available and what they charge. That way, then, we could assess whether, at least from my standpoint, I get Vice Mayor Yudi's suggestion that also looking to protect, but at least then we get an idea and are not dealing with, not necessarily hearsay, but insufficient facts in order to- not dealing with, not necessarily hearsay, but insufficient facts in order to place this on the books.
All right, so, Councilmember Jacobowski, did you have comments?
I don't think anything that hasn't been said already, thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Wong, did you have anything to add to the comment section of our discussion?
Yes, actually, I think that we wait until next month, I mean, we won't have another meeting until a month later, and I think we should adopt this urgency ordinance, so that, I mean, it's up to the restaurant, if the contract is signed with all these deliveries. So if they want to go with 15 or go with 25, it's up to them, but, I mean, for example, for the restaurant, you know, that came to us and asked for help, I think that's what they need right now, that's why, you know, he came to our last meeting. So, you know, like Director Cervantes said, that it's not that the city that enforced the code is actually, it's, you know, it's the business, you know, so if they're not happy with it, they can always come back and tell us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Udi?
Some questions, Councilman Wong, I heard you say two different things and conflicting things. One thing I heard you say was sign it immediately so we can give some relief to Colonial Kitchen, and I also heard you say they'll like it, they can go sign up with somebody else, but if you sign.
No, what I meant.
That's the law, isn't it?
No, what I meant was, so if the restaurant, if they are willing to pay 25% to Postmate, they can continue to do that, you know, they, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's how, that's how, you know, they do it.
I don't think that's the case, because if we pass an ordinance that it's 15%, it's 15%. It's not 25.
Okay, all right, okay, you have a point there, yes, I agree with you at that. Well, I just think that that's why Colonial Kitchen can do us.
You know, and again, I'm obviously a free market advocate here, and I also get concerned about the priorities for Director Cervantes and his team, and where does this project really fit on the list of all of his other priorities? And you heard the other things he was presenting tonight, so over the next X weeks, how much time do we want Director Cervantes to spend on this that I don't think we're ever going to get a good answer for versus the other, other priorities? And I think it's not just Colonial Kitchen, it's the convenience factor for our residents that are currently taking advantage of third-party delivery for a whole lot of things, and, yeah, for a whole lot of things.
All right, so do we have any further thought as to whether we continue this to get more information, or I believe, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you, ma'am. I have no opinion on your policy decision, that's your decision to make, and whatever you're comfortable with and you prefer is certainly what will do for you. I would like to build off of one of the points that Vice Mayor Udi made, which is that if you are not going to adopt this ordinance tonight, and you actually want us to come back, I would ask that you feel relatively sure that getting additional information would actually make a difference to you. If you, if you know, like, you know, if you know that no matter what information we come back with, you're going to support this, or you know that no matter what information we come back with, you would not support this, he does have quite a lot of priorities on this, but you might think he's gotten rid of a lot, given how many items were in front of you today, but that is not the case, he has many more coming. So we are happy always to go back and get you additional information if it will really make a difference in your decision. If you already have enough information to make a decision, though, I would, I would ask that you make that decision whichever way it is.
Okay, so I think that we could do a straw poll at least two of members tonight as to whether they would consider, depending on the outcome of restaurant survey, survey, excuse me, of San Marino restaurants, to understand where we stand with what's in town, and I.
That survey would also have to take into consideration how residents currently use third-party delivery, not just San Marino restaurants.
I understand your position, however, my concern, and I think I heard Councilmember Wong also speak to the concern about our restaurants and our local businesses, and trying to help them out during this time when this, the margins are extremely small, and they are continuing to be hit, and this will only get worse financially for them. So this is an effort, and we've been asked specifically by a longtime and well-regarded restaurant owner to look into this, and so I personally would support a continuation of this, and would like to know if we have three or more council members who would like to see what the situation is with the restaurants in San Marino specifically, and depending on the outcome of that, we understand we may still have a differing of opinion among council members as to the ultimate. Want to get a point of clarification on that?
Sure.
How many restaurants would that involve survey?
About 10 or 12.
Okay. So do I have support from Councilmember Wong to do a survey?
Just to be clear, what I heard the vice mayor say was that it isn't just about surveying the restaurants, it's also about being interested in how it impacts the residents, is that, so again, we just need to know what impact.
So the tall story from Spanlish, you know, is that to be part of this, this survey or not, or discussion? Because, yeah.
Okay, so I do not think that my request or what I'm asking for today would not involve a community survey. I need further information as to what's going on with our restaurants specifically to come to a determination, and I don't understand myself what we have here, but those are my concerns, not delivery service unlimited. But I would like to see what we could do to help our local restaurants. I understand that there are other implications of that, and that comes out to whether it's ultimately adopted, but I don't know if people here today, if anybody else would like to know what the situations are for the 10 or 12 restaurants in town, I think that would take full calls and hopefully be fairly quick in terms of Director Cervantes or even his staff's time to get that information before our next city council meeting. Do we have anybody else who's interested in that information, or who would find that useful before deciding this particular?
I would find that type of comparison useful, especially since what we've heard is they have the option of signing the contract or not, do they have more than one option? So if, if they decide not to go with Postmates, which apparently charges substantially more than some of these other services, they have that outlet, and that's what I'd like to know.
Okay, Councilmember Wong, well, I guess then the other flip side is that, do we have three people who would support or deny this motion, or deny this at this time?
I clearly don't think this is the city's role, and I think that Director Cervantes has more important priorities, and I think that restaurants and businesses in town can get creative.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
You know, I've been sort of fence-sitting on this, but here's, here's my bottom line, I would want this applicable only to restaurants in town, and just because Colonial Kitchen feels one way, I don't know how the other 10 or 11 feel, and there is a possibility that they might say, "We're so desperate, we'll take it under any conditions." We just don't know what the group think is on this, so I'm not as concerned about the residents and what they are or aren't willing to pay, I'm more concerned about our restaurant owners, so I would want to know how the others in town feel.
Okay, so since there seems to be at least three at this time who would like information about San Marino services, Councilmember Wong, I'm sorry, did you want to weigh in on this before we give?
Well, yeah, I guess so, you know, we have three council members that want to have more research into this and ask the other restaurants. Yes, I mean, I can agree with that.
All right, thank you very much, and I agree, we have at least three or four who are interested in further, yes, please. Continue, Councilmember Wong?
No, no, I was done, thank you.
Okay, so let me just be sure that I, I think I'm hearing, if I'm listening to all of you, it sounds like the majority interest is that we talk to all of our restaurants, our 10 to 12 restaurants, get a sense of which delivery services they're using, if any, what rates those delivery services are charging, and what their feeling is about a cap.
Right.
Right?
Yes. Or if they just want us to get involved in this issue.
I mean, they may, right, they may say, "We aren't interested in enforcing a cap."
Right.
That might be their answer on that part side.
Coke Colonial Kitchen now uses Grubhub, you know, so it's not just Postmates, but that's what I'd like to find out.
Okay, okay, so we'll get a, hopefully it will not be time-consuming, and then I think that some of us will have a better understanding as to what their perspective is. So we'll continue this item till our December meeting?
Madam Mayor, can we get a motion, please, with a roll call?
Do we need a motion if we're just making, we're directing staff and we're going to continue it?
Yes.
A motion to continue, "I move to continue."
I'm sorry, can you just hang on a second, ma'am, just till we get the date here, because we move this meeting later, so the December meeting's actually pretty soon, it's not, it's not a full motion.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
City Attorney, are you comfortable if we continue it without specifying a date certain?
That's fine, the motion can just be, if I understand correctly, motion to direct staff to talk to all restaurants and get a sense of what delivery services are being used, what rates, and what those restaurants' feelings are about the cap, and to bring it back to the council for consideration at a future meeting.
And I apologize, ma'am, the concern that the director shared with me is not that he could get it done, but that it'll require responses back from the restaurants in a timely basis. So if we can get it onto the December agenda and we've heard back from everybody, we will, but it may need to push. So if that's a motion that's comfortable, someone could probably just say, "So moved."
May I ask one question to the city attorney? Since this has been published, if we do a continuance, that doesn't affect, I mean, the original publication?
This was not a public hearing.
Oh, you're right.
This is a new, a new business item.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Okay, ma'am, step back, so, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
All we need is one of you to say, "So moved."
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No.
And Mayor Shepherd-Domick?
Yes, all right. All right, and we have, could it be the last item? Item 22, discussion and direction to staff regarding amending the 2019 California Building Code as it relates to natural wood roofing materials. I see that the chief is here, Chief Ruenda, as well as Director Cervantes, so we would love a staff report.
I'll provide the staff report, thank you, Mary Council, last one, I promise.
So close for a new voice.
So this item pertains, pertains to a discussion about the allowance of natural wood roofing materials to this, for the city, for our residents. If you recall back in 2019, the adoption of the, of the California Building Code along with local adoptions, we provided a provision to prohibit the use of natural wood shake or shingle roofs, with the exception of those that needed minor repairs, that 90% of the roof area. Prior to 2019 and going even further back, we did allow for natural wood shaker roofs with the provisions that if the property were in a high fire zone, that the roof is to be a Class A roof. Any other property outside of the high fire zone required a minimum of a Class B roof. And so, again, we introduced an ordinance that was approved in 2019 for the prohibition of this material. We have heard, since the adoption of that provision, a great deal of concerns from our residents as to the lack of opportunities and options for roofing materials. About a year ago, I had formed a committee, a very small committee of residents, to look at roofing materials that were out there, and we visited, or at least I visited, a roofing supply company here locally, and was able to obtain as much information as possible as to what kind of materials are out there. Unfortunately, a lot of the materials that are out there with respect to those that sort of fit our aesthetic requirements were products that we actually had removed from our pre-approval list in the past, such as Eagle, Eagle Roofing Supply Company. There's an abundance of composition shingles, of course, which we sort of don't allow here in town, at least with the exception of, not without a design review requirement. And so in that research with our small committee determined that there really isn't a lot of options out there with respect to those stimulated wood-like materials. And so it certainly is an issue of options available for our residents, and so they have expressed that concern to us. And so for tonight, the discussion that we're looking for, direction that both the chief and I are looking for, is if we are going down a path of amending the building code, what does that provision look like? And of course, we provided an example in our motion as to what direction could look like, but the direction is on the table. Are we looking to essentially allow natural wood roofs back into the city without provisions, without any standards? Are we looking to allow them to bring them back with very specific provisions? For example, the fire chief and I discussed as a, as a direction provided by council is to look at prohibiting natural wood shake or shingle roofs in a high fire zone, but to allow them in other areas with a minimum of Class A rating. There's also on the table discussion as to what we do with re-roofing with natural wood shake or shingles, and of course, we provided a standard of 50% on the re-roofing within a one-year period. What that means is, if you have a natural wood shake or shingle roof on your house now, there's not a Class A, for example, and you're looking to replace more than half of it, the replacement of more than half of it will trigger the need to conform to today's code, which can be a minimum Class A fire-treated wood shake roof or shingle roof. That, that is not what we're proposing, of course, that's on the table, and at this point, we're seeking direction from council as to what a future code amendment would look like with respect to allowance of natural wood, again, in our city. And so if our chief and I are available for questions, if you have any?
All right, thank you very much, Director Cervantes. Do we have any questions from council members? Councilmember Jacobowski, would you like to lead for this?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, perhaps, I may be gearing this toward Chief Ruenda. For the high-risk fire areas in our city, if we were to take a city nap, has your department plotted that out, or would it be more of a verbal thing that you would give us?
It's actually specified in the municipal code. There's 99 homes in that zone, and this is the second of three years of assessing whether or not that it continues to be accurate, but it does impact 99 of our residences.
And the general area of those homes?
General area is above, above Mill, Mill Lane, Mill Canyon, basically on the hill.
So it would be most of that area up there?
Not most of that area, yes, and it's, and I can't tell you where the last street is to the, to the east, maybe Shinadoa.
Okay, thank you, that top one, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Wong?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
Is there, would there be provision, and perhaps it's in the historical code, if you have a historical home that has a traditional wood shake and it's in the high density, are there provisions in there to exempt them so it's capable of retaining its historic value? I mean, how do we handle homes like that?
Yeah, part of the adoption of the 2019 Building Code, we also adopted the Historic Building Code, which has provisions, provisions in there to protect, there's a proper term for the use of archaic material, I guess they use some terminology, but they allow for the continuation of a, of a character-defining feature, I guess I'll say that, where if that is a, a feature of a house that qualifies it as a historic property, they're allowed to continue to use that.
Can I just follow up one thing?
Yeah.
Because we did discuss this, and, but it has to already be historically recognized, you can't be a potential historic resource, so for example, you know what I mean, just being kind of noted and listed, for example, on our upcoming survey, would not.
on our upcoming survey would not be enough to allow. You would have to, the homeowner would have to go through the process of historic designation through the city, state, national, right?
That's correct.
So it's very few in town. We have, that's a handful of properties.
The only thing I can say with, with, and that's absolutely correct, is, uh, if, as I mentioned, character-defining feature, um, if, if the home, uh, is a potential resource, although it is not a designated resource, but a potential one, in the eyes of CEQA, that's a historic resource. And so if the natural wood roof is a character-defining feature and looking to replace it, then we have to go through a, a historic assessment of that property to determine whether, uh, that would affect the integrity of that home pursuant to CEQA findings.
Couldn't, couldn't they also file a variance of some sort? Request a variance?
Final what? I'm sorry?
Not with respect to the building code. There's no provision for variance in building.
Oh, there.
Of, of the 99, did, the, the area you described, uh, Chief, did you, did someone go saying 99 of those houses have wood roofs? Or there's 99 houses in that area?
I don't know of any wood roof in that area. There may be, there may be just one or two, but I don't...
So the...
It is, because this has been in, the prohibition of having a Class A roof has been in place in our high-fire hazard severity zone for years. Uh, I think most of the wood roofs in that area have been replaced.
Long, long time in place. Okay, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yeah, Director Savantes, you did a quick analysis of different costs to the different roofing systems. Could you just share that?
Yes, so, so, uh, I looked into what, um, uh, what would make a class, or what would make a natural wood roof a Class A. Uh, a natural, a treated wood roof is on its own going to be a Class B, uh, material. What makes it a Class A is the underlayment. It's a substructure, is what you add beneath the tile. Um, and in this case, there's this very specific gypsum board or, or what, what's also known as a drywall. Uh, but very specific to wood, uh, specific to, uh, roofing substructures. Um, that has to be added throughout, uh, the, the roof membrane of the home, along with adding the, the treated wood shake on top of that. A combination of that entire assembly makes it a Class A roof. Now, the difference in cost between, uh, not going through those steps versus, uh, looking for a Class A is about 15% difference in cost. Uh, where I had found through, uh, looking at a lot of, for example, Nick Mupina, who's, was heavy on the natural wood shake roofs here, um, uh, was valuing these types of projects at about $12,000 to $16,000. Uh, I, he has not done a Class A roof, from my research. But in my research, uh, what adds cost is that gypsum board, which, um, uh, as I mentioned, my research finds about 15 to, also 15, 18% in total cost.
So it's a couple thousand dollars on a 2,000-square-foot roof?
Right, yeah.
And what's the cost to go from a Class A up to, um, the artificial roof?
Uh, a Cedarlite, which is the majority of what we have now, manufactured by Borrel, used to be manufactured by US Tile, and so forth and so forth. They just continue to, to sell these products. Um, you're looking at about $20,000 to $24,000.
Okay, so that's a big jump then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I also had a question in the recommendation here, excuse me, um, has to do with essentially copying the language that LA County had. And I have a problem with this portion of it that talks about no more than 50%, because I don't think that we want to have, I mean, it would be financially burdensome, plus a problem if somebody wants to repair their, or replace their roof, excuse me, under our new code, recognizing that this was going to be, let's say, A in the future. Why would we not allow a homeowner to replace their whole roof? I know that this has to in part deal with when people are fixing their roof, sort of patching or repairs. But it seems to me to also have a negative implication that you can't, if I'm reading it correctly, you can't replace your whole roof at one time with a class, even with a Class A.
Mayor, may I share my exact experience with that?
Uh, sure.
Uh, in 2019, right before they were banned, um, I had somebody come out and look at my wood shake roof. And they said, "The way the sun hits, um, I have a hip-style roof." They said, "Go ahead and get the bath replaced, and your whole garage needs to be replaced." So they said, "You've got a few more gears on the rest of the house." So sure enough, they put down the gypsum board, which they forgot to quote me on. And once they arrived with their materials, I said, "Wait a minute, I don't want this add-on now." And they said, "Well, we're just going to add it in because we have to use it." So it does depend sometimes on how the sun hits your house.
Sure, I understand.
So I, I mean, in my case, I was less than 50%, even with the garage and not doing the front of the house. Two years later, the front needed it and it all matched together.
Right, but why would we want to preclude? I know it can be the resident's choice to do it because of your situation. One part is more worn or deteriorated. But this to me suggests that you cannot do the whole thing if you want to, like in my instance, if I wanted to replace my whole roof. I'm just, why, why put the 50% in there at all?
Yeah, so we, we were looking to, I mean, the city of LA standards, and I believe, Chief, I found some more research on, on what the city allows, LA allows, uh, which is a lot more detailed than, of course, what's in this direction. So, Chief, do you want to?
Um, so, so in the report, it recommended 30%.
For what?
A resident would be allowed to, to replace up to 30% of the roof in a year, um, without having to, um, bring it up to Class A. And the 30% was chosen to really preclude somebody from fixing their, replacing half their roof and not upgrading any of the fire protection, and then coming back the next year and putting more wood shingles and, and not add into the fire protection of that neighborhood. Because this really is not so much about protecting somebody from the life safety issue. It's really about protecting your neighbors from the burning embers that are going to come from your house. Because attic fires and roof fires that we see, we've seen them in town, they are spectacular, they're big. Um, but the biggest risk is they're going to catch your neighbor's house on fire. And that neighbor may, depending on our wind conditions, could be five to seven houses away. Particularly if they have a 30-year-old wood roof, which is really a receptive fuel bed. Um, so that was the purpose of 30%. It'd be allowing you to fix what you needed to, but not, we wanted to sort of discourage somebody replacing half their roof, not upgrading, and then replacing the other half and not upgrading, and really being in the same circumstance for that neighborhood.
So then, under that scenario, just so I am, if I'm understanding the purpose, then it should be at 30, because you want to avoid that?
Oh, they, they're...
I'm speaking about the 50%. That just seems to me odd.
Yeah, it was, it was intended to try to preclude people from, um, from replacing and not upgrading.
Makes sense.
I'd originally proposed 30 in our discussions.
Right.
And, uh, I, I actually think that's the right number.
Right. I do too. But, and so I just was wondering, um, if that's our, we want people to upgrade and not be playing games with this, you know?
Yes.
Potentially. So why not make it even lower than the 50%? Because 50% to me seems to suggest, hey, we have a loophole for you.
And I apologize, that may be a version control issue with...
Okay, okay. I just want to, because I didn't, um, understand that one. But I do think this is so necessary. And, uh, I did ask or have an issue, uh, wanted to inquire from you since we have a shared command with South Pass. And South Pasadena here, it says discretion is provided to the chief, fire chief, Class A roofing required for high fire. So same, Class A, high fire, I've got that part. But what is this discretionary provided to the chief? Does their fire chief actually get involved in roof replacement of wood roof?
Um, he, that was, that was actually recommended by their third-party provider if, to give the fire chief an out if he ran into a circumstance where he needed to deviate from the code. But it does provide, it requires him to provide written findings. Um, and, um, I spoke with him today after your question, and he told me he believes he's the, seen three requests. And he's gone out and actually physically inspected those. And, uh, he couldn't remember his decisions, but he knows he looks at any vegetation nearby, any trees, other vegetation, any wires nearby. And the last is separation from adjacent structures. Um, but he does, he did tell me he knows he approved at least one.
And so this is situations where people do not want to upgrade to A because it's not required by their code. Their code just says, uh, does it even require B?
This is, this is, uh, provisions where somebody wants to continue to use a untreated product.
An untreated?
Yes.
Completely untreated? But B is treated?
B is, is, has moderate fire-resistant provisions.
And previously, just so I understand correctly, we have allowed B in our city. The question is, and then we went to precluding all. And so we bringing it back to see if we can still have wood and what level we want to go back to?
I think when Aldo and I first looked at this, we're looking at the long-term safety of the city, um, based on what we've seen here. Uh, what we didn't anticipate necessarily was the aesthetic issues that the Design Review Committee would encounter. And so this is a, um, a look back to see if there's a middle ground that still provides for significant fire safety. The Class A is a, is one of the safest roofs. Still eliminated, no wood shake in the, in the high-fire hazard severity zone, but allow people to, if they'll go through the additional 15%, 20%, uh, that they could put wood shake back on their house.
Thank you. And I know it, it's come up with more planning and DRC, so I appreciate you acting promptly on this because roof materials, uh, seems to be an ongoing, uh, issue for residents here. And we are coming, as I think Susan might have remarked at our earlier meeting, coming into rainy season, so it will be more care and I'm sure we'll get more applications. Um, do we have any, uh, public questions or comments at this time?
Yes.
Thank you very much for waiting, Mr. Johnson. Um, we do have a time limit, so, uh, we appreciate your comments. If we have seen your letter, but if you could, um, keep your remarks. I believe we have a three-minute public comment, so we will let you know. Thank you.
Okay, um, first item is, we're talking about which way the city is going. And I've surveyed, uh, all 242 houses, uh, in the, um, six streets, that are near my home. And of those 242, 27% are still wood, most of which kind of look like they're going to need help real fast, or reasonably fast. And 62% are flat tile, 62%. So most people, it seems to me, in this town are interested in going to, uh, something that is fireproof, or at least, pardon me, on this end of town. It may be different in the north and the west or something. I'm on the east end of, on Bell Hitting Road. Um, there are 10% composition, and, uh, so that's not very much. Uh, another thing I want to comment is that the Designer Review Committee has approved, uh, I would say probably, um, 15, 20, 15? Well, I'll say 15, um, steel roofs, um, over the last few years. Uh, people want, want that, which, because it's lighter weight, which is important for, uh, for earthquakes. And it's, uh, fireproof, it's Class A, no question. And they're lately been, since this wood problem came up, they've lately been approving, uh, composition that is approved, partially approved anyway. And the composition is, is going on. So that's another fireproof roof and also lighter weight than, uh, than tile. Uh, so we have, uh, we have, uh, examples of, shall we say, reviewed metal, reviewed composition, and, uh, in, in the situation, and I think they ought to be available for these residents to choose, choose from. Uh, some don't want to choose to get better wood. They want to choose to get a, a whole better roof. Uh, and the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And some look at it and wood and say, "Hey, that's a silly-looking thing because it's going, it can catch fire." And others look at it and say, "Well, that's the way it was since, uh, my granddad was little and I want to keep it that way too." So, uh, I think we need a way to go to get more, um, or at least let the residents choose steel and composition. Composition is not like it was, uh, 30 years ago. You get some really good stuff, Consumer Reports. You see that in my letter, it's attached in. They approved some, um, composition. Composition is the, um, most widely-used roofing material in this country. So what I'm after is where do we go? Do we, uh, do we say, "Oh, cater to the wood," which I think is a bad idea? Um, the, the treatment that they get does not last more than, uh, five years. After that, it's gone. Now, they can get some materials and try to restore it, but that, how well does that work? And not, not very long. It's not as good as the pressure, pressure-coated original material. So what's, uh, what you've got is a possibility of a firestorm, as the chief described it. And who needs that around here? Especially if we're going to have a big earthquake one of these days, there isn't going to be any water. There isn't going to be a fire department that can respond. That, we're, we're going to be, uh, up the creek without a paddle with, if the fire keeps going. We're much better off to change to fireproof system now. And that's why I'm here to try to say, "Let's, let's try it. Let's let the residents choose." If choose, chosen, at least in my area, 62% are flat tile. Maybe we can do better.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have anybody else online who would like to make a comment to City Council on this item?
I do not see anybody else requesting to speak on Zoom, and I have not received any emails except for Ms. Johnson's email.
Okay, thank you. And that's been furnished to council as well as will be part of the public record.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so at this time, I will bring the item back to council for discussion. Uh, do we have any further comments or questions from council members? I cannot remember where I started with, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wong?
Um, well, I think I can support this. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, I can support it. And, um, in the front part of the agenda, it says 30%. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you for that. I, um, Councilmember Tong?
Well, I would like to see us go back to, uh, the, the stipulation of the 2006 building code, which may not be that different. Uh, and allow, uh, the, with the 30% provision, if you're going to, if you're going to work on 30%, over 30%, then you have to go Class A. Um, but I, I'm not sure that's really different from what you're suggesting, but I just found it a lot easier. And that way, we let people choose. If they want to go with, with, uh, Class A wood, uh, roof, then they're entitled to.
So just to, just so I understand, because I don't remember the dates of the changes. So you are supportive of...
It's in the, if you, if you take a look, it was that the city's only stipulation included a mandate that all wood roofs in the very high hazard severity zone be a Class A rated, and all others in the city code required a minimum Class B rated roof.
Okay.
And, and my suggestion is that we then, if, if... And my suggestion is that we then, if, if they, if they want to repair, then there's a 30% limitation thereafter, they have to go with the Class A. And I think that's what you were suggesting.
I don't have the 2006 building code in front of me, but what we were proposing was that the, in our very high fire severity zone, that wood roofs would, wood roofs would be continued not to be allowed, period.
Oh, okay, that is different, even if they're Class A, even, even if you...
Even if they're Class A.
Okay, well, then I'd like to go, I'm sorry, Chief, but I would like to go back to the, the 2016 stipulation to allow it if they go to, to Class A, and, and take the precautions of the underlayment.
I also had a concern, just to follow up on that, because I think that there are some Wallace Neff wooden shingle proof houses in the high fire area that have existing wood roofs. And so, and again, I understand there's a lot of steps that they would have to, homeowners would have to go through, but my concern is that would fundamentally change some of those houses up there if they're not allowed to do Class, any wood roof at all in the high fire area. Because those, in my mind, are architecturally characteristic of an architectural style that's historic, and those homes are just a couple steps short of being recognized. But I don't want that to be an issue. So I, I just wanted to, I don't know...
In that case, could they go to the designer review committee or planning and get a variance?
No, he said you cannot, like, not if we mandated the ordinance.
So what you would be proposing is, is a Class A roof citywide? A Class A roof citywide if you want wood shake.
That's different, though, than what Councilmember Tault suggested.
You know, I would be willing to do that.
With the 30% stipulation.
With the 30% stipulation. If it's going to be wood. I, I, I would be willing to compromise on that.
Have those 99 homes known that they're high-risk and that they can't go to Class A wood? Or has that really not been presented to them?
With respect to the replacement of the roof, we have not discussed that with them. But we do go door to door each year and inspect their property, and in a number of cases, we give them a notice to, to clean their brush and vegetation.
So then, Vice Mayor Yudi, I'm sorry, I ended up before.
No, I, I think it's important for people to have choices, but we also have to have standards.
So the, I would also, well, I am desperately for having wood roofs back as an option for homeowners, for our historic residences and choices that I think people should make as to their house and the aesthetics of their own, even if it's not a Wallace Neff piece of art, but if that is part of the design of their home. So I'm anxious to get this back. I do understand that we have fire safety concerns, and I think, though, even in the fire, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not saying right, high-risk areas, I don't know what you call it, the term of art, but I would say that allowing Level A there, but still allowing them to replace an existing wood roof, not necessarily adding, but those ones that want to keep that should be a Grade A or Level A. As far as the rest of our community, I would go with a majority of council. I understand that Councilmember Tault wants, or suggested the 2006, which would require a B rating or higher for the other. However, I, I think it is a marginal cost, it seems like, 15, 10 to 20%. And so that would be better for our community. So I am happy to do that for fire safety because of trees and the closeness in some areas of the houses that do have wood.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy with, with that.
So then we would go with, we would introduce possibly the ordinance to be Grade A wood roofs throughout San Marino, would be inserted back in the building code, is something incorrect?
Class A, Class A would be permitted.
Throughout?
Throughout the city with a 30%...
With 30% trigger.
Right.
Correct.
Do we have the majority? Well, we're giving direction, so do we need to take a straw poll as to whether everybody? Okay.
Can I just ask a question? If we require Class A, the composite, they're, do we generally require Class A in composite? Or generally speaking, they all, they are all Class A now?
Yeah, those are all Class As.
Okay.
Materials alone are Class A already.
Okay, then, then, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
It sounds like the three of you at least are in favor of moving in this direction. Which would be the three? It does sound like Councilman Jacobowski has a question or comment he wanted to make, but I think if the three of you are unified on that, from our perspective, we have the direction we need.
True.
I was just going to respect the request of the department chief with his motion, but okay.
All right, we have direction from you, and we will bring this back as soon as we're able to.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for taking the time. And Director Sivantes, one more thing that you both had to do, but I appreciate it. I think it's very important as we move forward, and I know it would help ask what's going on in the Design Review and Planning Commission. So we next have a written community, or do we have, do you want a motion, or no, you have direction enough?
We have direction.
Now's the time for written communications or public writings that need to be distributed. Do we have anything for council members?
Please not.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anyone wishing to speak at this time for online or? Sorry, not, nobody here. We do not have anyone wishing to speak at this time.
Mayor, if I might, I know that we were very busy earlier today, and we had a long agenda, so I wanted to move through things quickly, but I do just want to point out that we welcome back our community engagement manager, Madhala.
It's welcome.
We're very happy to have her back. We've been blessed with many pictures of the very cute Ezra. I mean, he's not as cute as Clark, but he's really close.
Yeah, we'll see.
It's been great to have her back, and it's day three. So this is, this is the longest day she's had in quite a long time. I think it doesn't involve a crying baby.
We need Zoom playdate also with our city attorney's son, recent addition as well. So exciting news all the way around, and congratulations. And you both look wonderfully not sleep deprived, so hands off to you. But the mask is wonderful, wonderful. So luxurious and sealer. But congrats and welcome back to both of you, and thank you for coming back to our city and serving again. We're excited to have you back. The last item is future agenda items, and there was brought up at the meeting today by a designer view, and it prompted whether we need to take a look at some future date. So this is not a pressing one, but the issue of whether garages should be reviewed or accessory structures at the same time the house, or I'm sorry, what is, you know, a project is reviewed during the design period. So to put that together, I think that that might be something that makes sense. And I'm hearing that.
And are there free of you that would like to do that? One, two, three. Thank you very much. And your microphone.
And the microphone. And so seeing any other thing that council members want to bring up, then the meeting is adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and be safe.